Good morning and welcome everyone to the Maryland State Board of Education meeting on Tuesday, October 27, 2020. Happy to have everyone here. I'm here in the State Board Room Meeting Room. I'm here alone, so I don't have a mask. Let me ask you if you're not speaking to mute your line? If we can get you to do that, okay. At this time, I would like to ask Dr. Simpson to call the roll so that we can begin our meeting. Dr. Simpson? Dr. Simpson?
There's quite a bit of noise.
President Crawford, this is Elliot. I'll go ahead and do the roll call.
Okay. If you could mute your phone.
And somebody named Sean.
Sean Bartley, I'm here. Can you mute your phone? Thank you. All right.
Mr. Crawford?
Present.
Mr. General Sumter? Ms. Hallie? Mr. Bartley? I heard you before, Mr. Bartley. Mr. Dashill?
Present.
Dr. Getty?
Present.
Dr. Green?
Present.
Dr. Lee?
Present.
Dr. Melly McCarthy?
Present.
Ms. Morrow?
Present.
Ms. McCusker?
Present.
Dr. Wilcox?
Present.
And Mr. Wu?
Present.
I promoted you, Mr. Wu. President Crawford, all of your members are present.
Very, very good. Thank you very much. This public meeting is, will be conducted both virtually and in person. The public can access the meeting through the Town Hall streams and the YouTube streaming from the State Board's website. The meeting agenda and the materials are also posted there. The archived video will be posted on the website. During the meeting, only the board members and staff presenters will be able to speak. Board members will be asked to hold their questions or comments until the end of each presentation. Board members and staff should identify themselves when speaking. Dr. Salmon will respond to the questions or comments, or she will ask a staff member to do so. Voting will be conducted by voice vote, or we will have a roll call. Mr. Shum will ratify the vote. As we now move into the public comment period, I wanted to say a couple of things. That speakers will be called upon based on their registration. Comments will be limited to three minutes per speaker. Dr. Simpson will monitor the time. When the time expires, the speaker will be permitted to finish the sentence, but is required to make no further comments. The comments should be directed to the entire board and not to an individual board member. Board members will not respond to the speaker's comments, but will take all comments under advisement. Written statements or other materials should be submitted electronically to Dr. Simpson, who will make sure that copies are made available for all of the board members. This morning, we're very happy to have our guest with us this morning. Our first guest is Dr. Patricia Seelands, the president-elect of PZAN. Good to see you again and welcome.
Good morning. So thank you for this opportunity to speak on behalf of the county. First of all, thank you for yesterday's waiver vote regarding including non-immunized children in the implement for purposes of funding. This is extremely helpful for upcoming budget predictions and challenges. And as Dr. Salmon said, every superintendent is committed to having all children vaccinated before they physically return to school. We hope we can count on the board and the department's support by encouraging the governor to recognize this budget cliff that we are going to be facing this upcoming year with our traditional formulas as it relates to enrollment count for 930 and for 1031. There is a decrease in enrollment to our public school just, school systems across every district at roughly 3% to 5%. And we ask that you and the state essentially advocate to our governor to hold us harmless for next year's budget. Just to let you know what that impact would look like for a smaller district, that would be about $1.7 million. For our largest districts, that looks more like $60 million. And for a medium size, more about eight to $10 million. So we do ask that you advocate for that. As it relates to health and safety, we thank Dr. Salmon. As she mentioned yesterday, that Dr. Cham will be meeting with our local superintendents, as well as our local health departments. And this gives us an opportunity to clarify any issues and concerns that we have, opens up direct communication, and we just are looking forward to that opportunity so that we can get more consistency across our districts. So thank you very much. As it relates to assessments, we can't thank you enough. We know that you've recognized some of the difficulties that our seniors are facing, and we thank you for that waiver of graduation requirements for our seniors. And we are very hopeful for today's vote to extend that waiver for our juniors. But we also ask that you look at the recommendations for the graduation task force, which recommended to remove all high-stakes testing as a requirement for graduation. We all can agree that assessments are important in proving and measuring student progress, but we also know that research supports that a GPA, not a single test score, is a greater indication of student progress. So we ask that you revisit that. And finally, we were very encouraged yesterday by the department's acknowledgement of the need for flexibility during these very difficult times when delivering instruction synchronous. In knowing that all of our districts are different in how we are delivering synchronous instruction, we were encouraged by the board's recognition of this, and we look forward to working with you and the department on clarifying what synchronous learning looks like as we ebb and flow between virtual and in-person instruction in a hybrid model. So thank you again for your time this morning. We look forward to engaging with the board via this public comment format in your regular meetings in the near future. So thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have Mr. Brendan Cohen. Welcome, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for having all of us here. Can everybody hear me? So my name is Dr. Brendan Cohen, and I'm a product of the Maryland Public School System. I just finished my residency in physiiatry at Sinai Hospital Baltimore, so my expertise is in caring for patients with particularly disabling conditions such as strokes, traumatic brain injuries, spinal cord injuries, amputations, and so on. Immediately after residency, I decided to answer the call from my community to serve in the fight against what is by far the most significant public health crisis to happen in any of our lifetimes, which as of this morning has killed at least a quarter of a million Americans. I'm now a staff physician at the Emergency Field Hospital in Baltimore Convention Center, which is managed cooperatively by the University of Maryland, Johns Hopkins, FEMA, the Maryland National Guard. And I'm here today to give this board a reminder that decisions that they make have consequences that extend far beyond the classroom. Crowding teachers and students and staff back into poorly ventilated, already overcapacity, and infrequently stocked and sanitized school buildings that even pre-pandemic had been rotted by decades of neglect and austerity would not only wreak havoc on those inside building, but on everyone these individuals go home to and ever come into contact with. The inadequate air circulation, the necessity of close-range talking, the infinite number of surfaces that everyone touches, and the likelihood of poor understanding or non-compliance of safe distancing practices and sterile technique makes schools a perfect nightmare for those such as myself who are working tirelessly to contain this disease. We're only just starting to understand the potential long-term effects of coronavirus. There's a rapidly increasing number of case reports about devastating and sometimes permanent neurological derangements such as strokes, De Jong-Buray syndrome, and early dementia, and other complications such as congestive heart failure and pulmonary fibrosis, both of which involve irreversible damage to vital organs that steadily worsen for life. Couple this with the increasing evidence that infection only confers short-term immunity and the likely circulation of this disease for at least the next year or two, and we're looking at the possibility of individuals experiencing multiple courses of this disease, each one increasing the likelihood of lifelong disability, allowing our schools to propagate disease through our communities that already lack the basic essentials that the rest of civilization enjoys, such as mandated paid sick leave, universal health insurance, out lapses of coverage due to an increasingly turbulent job market, and basic public health infrastructure like contact tracing and supply reserves would be the final straw that breaks our already failing healthcare system. I'm sure you've heard plenty about how this disease has fallen disproportionately on poor and communities of color. So opening schools without safety measures light years beyond what we currently have would essentially be an act of class and racial warfare, and would condemn thousands or millions of people to disability, disfigurement, and death. I sincerely hope that this board will consider these hard truths and make absolutely certain that ironclad and evidence-based safeguards are in place to avoid catastrophe, not only for our schools, but for each and every single one of us. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments.
Happy to be here.
At this time, we'd like to welcome Ms. Margaret Flowers.
Thank you, and I really appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak to you today. I am a long-term Baltimore resident. I did my medical school at University of Maryland and completed my pediatric residency at Johns Hopkins Hospital. I practiced pediatrics for 17 years, and I'm right now retired. I've been a longtime advocate for a national improved Medicare for All. I've been following what's going on with COVID-19, and I frequently write and speak about it in the media. I know this is a difficult time for everyone. People are not getting the support that they need. I know that the school board is not getting the support it needs. You know, we've really failed as a nation in terms of handling this and providing the financial and other supports that people need to get through this. But I think that our goal still needs to be to take this seriously and to stop transmission with, you know, in any way that we can. I know that, you know, the White House is saying we'll mitigate it, but that's not really acceptable. We need to continue to have the goal of putting health first and stopping transmission. As Dr. Cohen said, the SARS-CoV-2 is a new virus, and we're still learning about it. We do know that there are long-term consequences impacting the brain, heart, lung, liver, kidney, and we don't know what those long-term consequences are going to mean for children. And so in that regard, we do need to take this seriously and be cautious about it. Children do become infected with COVID-19, with the virus and get COVID-19, and although they frequently have mild disease, they can still transmit it to other children and to adults. We're not seeing high rates of that yet because we haven't really had children back in school for a long time, but they have that potential to, to transmit this to other people. And transmission occurs even when people are asymptomatic, which means it's very difficult to stop it, because we just don't know sometimes when someone is infecting others. Right now, we have cases surging around the United States, and we're on an uptick and may see, you know, as we go into winter, an even more severe rise in the cases. And so as we know that, you know, transmission of infectious agents is exponential, one person can infect several or many others. We are kind of in a precarious situation where we could really spike and see a very serious surge. As Dr. Cohen said, this is a real hardship for families. It's hardship for our teachers, for our staff at the schools. It's hardship for families because we don't have a universal healthcare system, and so even becoming sick or suspecting that you may have the disease, you know, and requiring hospital attention puts a financial burden on families, as well as, of course, the deaths that we're seeing, and what does that do to our families? We shouldn't be asking our teachers, our staff, to be putting their lives at risk to, you know, so that we can open our schools. This is a time when I think, you know, it's a crisis, and it really calls upon us to be creative and to really put health first and to make the demands that we need to make to, to make sure that our students' needs are met, that our, you know, families' needs are met. And as Dr. Cohen said, it's, it's difficult to get everyone the protective equipment that they need and to have them using it properly to keep environments sterile. So I urge the school board to be a real leader in the nation and to, you know, to take the necessary steps of involving staff, teachers, students, parents, the community, and coming together to meet our needs. There around the country, there are efforts to provide tutoring and other sorts of assistance to teachers by students and by community members. We need to make sure that all families have sufficient internet and computers and IT support so that they can do remote learning. We need to join in the struggle to make sure that there are no evictions, that families are getting the food that they need and their other supports. And so I just urge you to be a leader. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, we will have Ms. Natalie Vansant. Ms. Vansant?
Can you, can you hear me?
Can hear you now, yes.
Oh, great. Perfect. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I hope to share some of my personal experience working as a frontline healthcare worker during the pandemic. I also want to say that I spent the entirety of my K through 12 education in the Baltimore County Public School System. I have been an ICU nurse at Johns Hopkins Hospital for the past two years. Even on a normal day, being in an intensive care unit can be high drama. So it's not unusual for me to confront fear in the workplace, but working at the bedside during the pandemic left me feeling more scared than I've ever felt before in my career. COVID patients on ventilators in respiratory distress were the sickest patients I have ever seen. We quickly became understaffed and faced a surge of patients who needed specialized negative pressure rooms. This often meant that I would arrive for a shift and be sent to work elsewhere in other ICUs in the hospital that I had converted to COVID ICUs. I would work alongside people I had never met in environments that were entirely unfamiliar for what would seem like an interminable 12 hours. I would wear an N95 and a papper for up to four or five hours at a time, taking only short breaks off the unit to eat and drink. Aside from the physical discomfort of constantly wearing PPE and the exhaustion I felt from my job, I also felt haunted by the mortality I had witnessed. After I became a nurse, I chose to pursue critical care because it is, it is literally life-saving work. When I was caring for COVID patients, it began to feel that we were not saving many lives at all. It was stunning to see the amount of death that happened despite the highest level of care at one of the world's best hospitals. Though many of those patients were of older age or had chronic medical conditions, there were some who had been completely healthy beforehand. The disease struck seemingly randomly, even among people who had been taking proper precautions, wearing masks, and practicing social distancing. I spoke with distraught family members over the phone, providing daily updates on their loved ones' condition. I cared for patients who I knew were dying while we struggled to jump through the bureaucratic hoops to ensure that their families could visit in time. This has been a heartbreaking year, and it's easy to feel despair when we think about the extent of the loss that stretches far beyond just the more than 200,000 lives lost. But I want to urge the board to carefully consider the impact that their decisions will have on our entire community. It is my honor and privilege to care for patients that have become sick. However, as you contemplate reopening and resuming a more normal way of operating, I humbly ask that you keep the community of healthcare workers and what we have endured through COVID-19 in mind as you make these decisions. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you very much, and thank you for your service. At this time, we will have Ms. Kristen Caminetti.
Kristen Caminetti.
I'm sorry.
No problem. It's a, it's a tough one. Thank you. My name is Kristen Caminetti. I'm the mother of four children, three of whom are in elementary school in Anarondale County Public Schools. I'm not here today to tell you not to open schools. I'm here today to implore you to open them in a thoughtful way that serves the students who need in-person instruction the most. I had planned to discuss the politics I see playing out at the state level regarding education and how that is negatively impacting local jurisdictions and their decisions to reopen schools. I came to request that you stay out of those apolitics and allow local school systems to make decisions based on their own metrics and the needs of their own communities, not just allowing Governor Hogan to say, yes, Maryland schools are open. I came to implore you to stop the undue pressure you're placing on schools to open because I see the damage it is doing in Anarondale County. Our Board of Education is pushing through a plan that meets no child's needs well. It isn't prioritizing struggling students. It is wreaking havoc on all students, many of whom will be placed with new teachers and classmates. I came to encourage you to require school systems to do a thorough needs assessment before developing reopening plans so that the schools are truly meeting student needs. Having watched much of your meeting yesterday, I must address the concerning comments I heard from Dr. Salmon, who shared about the large number of emails she is receiving from parents on a daily basis who are incredibly upset about virtual learning. She detailed photos and videos she has been sent of crying children in front of computers, and she offered these emails and these photos as evidence for why we must open. So let me share a different perspective. I have a kindergartner, a second grader, and a fifth grader. They are all thriving without tutors or learning pods. They are thriving because they have caring, dedicated, amazing teachers who have gone above and beyond to make virtual learning a positive, engaging experience. When I asked my kindergartner what he would say if he was testifying publicly, this is what he wrote. "I like my teacher because she makes things a lot of fun. I didn't think I would like learning from a computer, but then I really liked it a lot. My teacher is Ms. White, and I love her a lot. She is doing a great job, and I love school." Please don't let the crying videos and photos tell the whole story of virtual learning. Yes, there are many students struggling, but many are thriving. Don't completely upend a system that is working for many. Any guidance you give school systems about how to reopen should require that they do a thorough needs assessment first. Every school system should be opening in a data-driven, needs-focused manner, not in a way that gives all families the same choice. Require that every school system take an equitable approach to reopening schools and ensure that they aren't developing one-size-fits-all plans, but instead are seeking to meet specific needs. No school system can know how to best open schools unless they first fully understand the new, the needs of their students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. At this time, we will turn to Ms. Cheryl Bost. Good to see you. How are you doing?
Good morning. Great to see you all. So I want to be clear. Since the summer, educators have asked for basic safety measures to be put in place before schools reopen. As you've heard people talk, adequate ventilation, sufficient supplies of PPE, increased sanitation of schools, clear and transparent procedures for anyone who tests positive. This is what's right, and it's what's safe. That's what's supported by more than 95% of educators statewide as requirements to physically reopen safely, as seen in the poll we released yesterday, and I will share with you. Actually instituting those measures across the state will help us get back to where we want to be, back in our classrooms safely with our students. To make guidance more easily accessed and actionable, we compiled all of the guidance from the Maryland Department of Health, CDC, and your Department of Education, and developed a checklist that has also been adopted by the Maryland PTA and BTU. All administrators, educators, and parents should use this checklist to make sure their schools have the clear safety standards that health officers have developed and you support. This checklist is not asking for anything outrageous. It's from your guidance. It is asking for what is right. It is asking for what is safe. You could take a position and support these checklists and the collaboration, and then we could see results and assist local districts to remedy what is not being met. Not put ratings on a scorecard, but true help and support. In addition, educators and parents need an accurate dashboard that provides updated information on positive cases and outbreaks. And the local superintendents have asked for a statewide reporting tool and protocols for communication. This is being done in other states, even recently in Virginia, and will help communities be informed. Ignoring this request is not right and is not helping us to be safe. And since the summer, we have supported local systems to make the decision at the local level to begin limited hybrid models with small groups of students for whom equity concerns around extended virtual learning are greatest. Educators who feel comfortable working in school buildings should be able to do so. Reopenings must be done with educator voices at the table with clear and consistent communication to educators and parents. As a teacher, I can tell you, I hear from educators every day. They want to do what is right for students, but what is being asked of them right now without the proper safety protocols, resources, and supports is crushing them. As Rachel shared yesterday, they're underwater. We understand the stress is high on everyone, including our students, but this is not a time to be divided or to be intentionally divide parents and educators. We can all do better. So we are asking you to invest in the safety precautions needed to help educators and keep students safe. Each building should meet the checklist requirements. Listen to the voices of educators. Help us stay safe and have manageable workloads to best meet the increased needs of students. And we wish that you would spend less time talking about athletics and more time talking about the digital divide that is impacting students and their educational success. Be transparent. The state should stop hiding data from educators and parents and the public about coronavirus in schools and simply create a reporting tool. Be realistic. Without an additional investment in safety and with a surge in positive cases, it is impossible to see how we will safely and sustainably have a large-scale physical reopening. And yes, making sure our schools are safe costs money. The National Associations for Superintendents and School Business Officers say that $486 per student is required to keep them safe during a pandemic. The so-called reopening grants offer barely $15 per school student, or just 3% of what superintendents say is necessary for safety. That is not helping us to be safe. We must work together to do what's right and do what's safe. We need to listen to our educators. Thank you for your time this morning.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll have Ms. Catherine Carter. Welcome.
Can you hear me? My name is Catherine Carter. I'm a former English teacher and now stay at home mom of five kids, kindergarten, fourth, sixth, eighth, and tenth. After four weeks of virtual school this fall, I un-enrolled four of the five of my kids. Three of them have IEPs from the Howard County Public Schools District. I really thought we could do this. We were able to complete the spring with five kids, though it was hard. But to be honest, the complexity of managing the curriculum, the sheer amount of work expected was too much. It was difficult to follow the modules, links, different apps, et cetera. While my high schooler thrived, my daughter had deteriorated to the point of daily meltdowns and regression in gains we had made. My son, who was a year behind in reading due to phonological processing disorder, struggled to complete the assignments because of the amount of reading. Meanwhile, I had to spend most of my time wrangling my kindergartner to attend his class. I felt like a virtual parent. I felt like as a virtual parent, I was a teacher managing teaching and failing another teacher's class. Virtual learning overwhelmed them and broke us. The school mentioned specialized students could be coming back, but due to my personal pre-existing condition in our household, that is not a safe option. I also worry about all of those not taking COVID seriously and even the health of staff. Here's the thing. I believe in virtual school, but taking a brick-and-mortar school and trying to make that virtual doesn't work. As I face multiple kids with different grades, and there, there had to be a standard-based technology that could teach my children and meet their individual needs and give me back my sanity. I took some of the programs that the school was using that was working online and got the student and teacher version of seamless embedded programs, imprinted textbooks and workbooks created by a team of publishing experts. The result is all my kids have become independent learners and thriving. They look forward to school every day. My daughter, who struggled to do one assignment for hours, wakes up at 7:00 a.m. and independently does all of her classwork. My fourth grader can read his work with seamless audio support, and significantly is improving. Sorry, that's an R alarm for my 10th grader to go to class. Significantly improving his reading. My kindergartner grabs his workbook or tablet, deciding which subject to work on first, and makes sure to tell me he needs a recess break. In addition, I discovered my kids could get a service plan to continue to support, though not all of their IEP goals, at least some, which was awesome. I can get to do speech with my son, talking with my daughter's IEP teacher on writing goals, and have someone help with my son's reading. A true virtual school with seamless programming can be used beyond this constraint to support people. And I'll just end with this. We are running a marathon at full sprint because Comer sets the pace with no end in sight. You are breaking us. Please slow down, prioritize what is, and find what is working, and fix what isn't, and make sure you let teachers, parents, and students in the room where it happens. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. At this time, we'll have now Ms. Sharon Saroff.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, and you said it correctly. It's Saroff.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Sharon Saroff. I'm a special education consultant and parent advocate. I'm the mother of two individuals with disabilities who graduated from the Baltimore County Public Schools and are now attending the Community College of Baltimore County. And I'm also the godmother of a child in the 11th grade at Newtown High School in Baltimore County on the certificate track. I'm also a former special education teacher and special education director from another state. I feel this experience gives me a unique perspective. Don't try to open schools. Try to concentrate on the virtual learning, and this is why. What we are seeing right now is a surge in the COVID-19 virus. Just yesterday, we became aware that Dorchester Public Schools had to shut down because of significant increase in the COVID-19 infections in that community. Is this what we want for our students when we open up and we constantly have to close because there's an uptick in the virus? What we need to do is look at the virtual learning in a serious way, like Kat said. We need to look at what is working and what isn't working. I have students on my caseload who are special needs students who are thriving, let me repeat myself, thriving on the virtual learning. They are able to sit down one-on-one with their teachers and get the assistance that they need without the distractions of the classroom. Yes, there are students who are not thriving. I hear this every day at IEP meetings that I attend virtually with clients in three districts, Howard County, Anarundel, and Baltimore Counties. I implore this board to please, if you are doing, and take a look at other states and see what is working with virtual learning instead of just pushing us to open. We need to open safely for the sake of our teachers, our students, and our communities. Right now, I'm stuck at home. I have a preexisting condition. Both of my children have preexisting conditions besides their disabilities. They need to stay home, and so do I. Let's not push this situation so that we all are broken. Let's look at what we can do better because we can. We need guidance, Dr. Salmon. We don't have any guidance. Telling each school system to do what they want and do what's best for them is not the way to go. That's why I have a job. I'd much rather be in the classroom. We need guidance so that we know how to deal with special education in this new normal and provide for students with disabilities in every county in the state of Maryland and let Maryland lead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we'd like to turn to Mr. Thomas Warner. Warner? We cannot hear you.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Good morning, President Crawford and other members of the Maryland State Board of Education. Thank you very much for this opportunity to offer comments. My name is Tom Warner, and I have resided in Maryland for 50 years, '46 recently in Frederick County, and early on, four years as a midshipman at the Naval Academy. My primary takeaway for my comments here this morning is a need for centralized development at the state level of additional and more effective course authoring tools. I have spent the last six months exploring a variety of these tools and actually using them. First, a definition. Course authoring tools are online applications that permit the incorporation of course content in a variety of media forums, text, images, audio, video, and importantly, so-called learning activities that are interactive visual exercises that reinforce the learning process that go well beyond just quizzes. The course authoring applications are standalone and are compatible with most learning management systems. Next, why this need? First, more and better course authoring tools could help provide the additional time that will be needed to open schools quickly in a safe and effective manner. The quality and use of literally dozens of online course authoring tools has improved dramatically over the past several years, and in particular, over this past year because of increased emphasis on virtual learning during the COVID-19 pandemic. The priority for which courses need more emphasis and their specific content is left up to the individual school districts in order to better match their particular demographics. However, that current approach is also to let the individual school districts determine which of the dozens and dozens of choices of course authoring systems to pursue, and they are not dependent upon the local demographics. Therefore, there is much duplication of effort with the attendant expenditure of more money. A centralized approach by the state would be much more cost-effective and operationally more efficient in exchanging course content ideas among the districts. Lastly, next steps. Consider assembling a small working group led by Maryland State Department of Education on the best manner in which to proceed. I am not suggesting this to become a member of such a group, but in my last six months of experience, I have encountered many professionals at universities and in other state school districts who would be helpful. I would be happy to share possibilities for the makeup of this working group as you feel would be helpful. I appreciate your time this morning and especially all of your hard work and difficult decisions that you make every day in these challenging times. Thank you very much.
Thank you, and thank you all of our public commenters coming in and sharing your thoughts and insights. We greatly appreciate those. At this time, we're going to transition to new business. I trust that the board members have received and we're posting the updated version of the minutes. So under new business, we have approval of the minutes, personnel actions, budget adjustments for September 20, 2020. And then we also have the selection of candidates for the incentive program certification. I would like to approve these four new business items by general consent.
So moved.
Second. So we have it, motion by Senator Bates and second by, is it Ms. Haley? Were you? No, I'm sorry.
I actually have a question.
Yes, please.
So there are 1,000 slots available for the national certification, but we see that we're submitting a list of, I think it's 500 and some candidates, and it's uneven across the state. I'd just like a little clarification in terms of what, why aren't we able to take advantage of the full allocation?
I can try to answer that question, but I think this is all a, all we do is put the information out there, Ms. Haley, and then the school systems would be the people to encourage their teachers to participate. And at this point, we just process what we get from each of the school systems. The school systems promote this program more rigorously than others, and I guess that can account for the unevenness, but it is, this is just a grant program that we make available to local school systems.
Just in terms of helping our teachers to be better prepared in the classroom, perhaps, President Crawford, we can put on a future agenda some way to look at this program and see if there aren't steps that we can take to get more engagement.
Yes, we can definitely do that. I'm making up now.
Thank you very much, Dr. Salmon.
Thank you. Just a second. Just making a note so I won't forget. And did I see another question? Dr. Wilcox.
Yes, I have a change that I'd like to make to the minutes from September 21st.
Yes.
I did not object to priority number three. It was some of the wording that I wanted changed. So as written in the minutes, it looks like I was opposed to priority three when that was not the case. Thank you.
Thank you. So, all righty. So we would note the correction as indicated by Dr. Wilcox as an amendment. We now get a motion to approve the new business items with the amendment, the amendment that was identified by Dr. Wilcox. Get a new motion to do that.
So moved.
Senator Bates and a second.
Second, Jane Haley.
I'm sorry. I think it was Mr. DeShields raised his hand. Are there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, what I'd like to do is to do a voice vote. If I would, if the board members can make sure their videos are turned on, so be a voice and raising your hand so that we can see. That's got a couple here that waiting on, okay. All righty, all in favor, say aye and raise your hand so that they counted easily.
Aye.
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 And opposed, abstaining. Mr. Woo, did, did you vote?
Yes, I voted in favor.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Mr. Show?
Motion carries. Unanimous.
Very good. Thank you. All righty, so we pick up on yesterday's agenda items, the priorities, and the first item that we are going to turn to Dr. Salmon is on the funding issue, the CARES and related funding, and then we will look at the ESSA accountability.
Thank you, President Crawford, and it's good to see all the board members again today. We will be giving our CARES Act funding summary, and I just want to reiterate, we still have some erroneous information going around, but we have dispersed over $400 million to local school systems over the past few months. And Emily Brandenburg, our deputy of finance, will be reviewing this and giving a report on how this shakes out across the state. So Emily, please present.
Thank you, Dr. Salmon. I'm going to share my screen. And are you guys able to see the presentation?
Yes, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Salmon. Good morning, President Crawford and members of the board. And I'm sorry, it has a weird thing on here. Okay. In May, we presented an overview of CARES Act funding and the different programs that the Maryland State Department of Education was responsible for. Today, we are presenting CARES Act funding programs as it pertains to our local school I'm so sorry, but this does not want to change slides. There we go. As a reminder, the Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act was signed into law on March 27, 2020. This $2.2 trillion economic stimulus bill was in response to the economic fallout as a result of the coronavirus. There are three funds that allocated over $400 million to our local school systems: the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief, or what we refer to as the ESR Fund; the Governor's Emergency Education Relief, or GEAR Fund; and the Coronavirus Relief, or CRF Fund. Today, I'll provide a brief overview of each of these funds and what was allocated to our local school systems. This table highlights the different programs from the CARES Act that directly supported our local school systems. The remainder of this presentation will go through these programs in more detail. The Coronavirus Relief Fund distributed $150 billion nationally to states and local governments. Governor Hogan allocated $200 million of his awards to support our local school system. We established a $100 million tutoring grant program. These funds were allocated in the same manner as fiscal year 2019 Title I and were awarded to support tutoring and supplemental services to compensate for learning loss associated with COVID-19 school closures. School systems use these funds to expand summer tutoring programs, after-school programs, and other interventions, including social and emotional wellness. As an example, Somerset County used a portion of their funding for this program to provide additional support to families. In addition to providing face-to-face tutoring opportunities for students, Somerset County created trainings and tutorials for their parents to help them support and reinforce the benefits of tutoring. These tutorials included tips in helping their child in reading from phonics-based approaches to comprehension strategies, as well as number awareness through computational skills and analytical thinking in math. Additionally, a $100 million technology program was established. These funds were allocated based on each local school system's share of statewide enrollment. This program supported technology needs associated with virtual learning. School systems use these funds to purchase devices, hotspots, security infrastructure, and network storage capacity. And lastly, a $10 million program was established by the Office of Rural Broadband to award grants to local school systems to provide funding for broadband connectivity to underserved students. These funds were awarded. These funds were awarded competitively based on need. These dollars were used for both hotspots and subscriptions. The Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Fund allocated just over $187 million, again based on the 2019 Title I allocations to our local school systems. There's a broad allowable use for these funds, including any activities that are necessary to maintain the operation and continuity of services for our local school systems. Our local school systems are using these funds for a variety of uses, including technology, support for their food service programs, PPE, and other COVID-related expenses. Frederick County established a new initiative for family engagement, a mobile literacy clinic. In August, school buses were used as literacy clinics to make scheduled stops in communities throughout Frederick County. The literacy clinics were staffed with teachers who led students through engaging hands-on activities with books. This initiative was targeted for students and families in grades K through two. Also, as part of ESR, MSDU was awarded a 10% set aside of the total award amount. A $10 million reopening grant program was established with this funding. The purpose of this program is to support costs associated with bringing students back for in-person learning. These funds are allocated based on a $200,000 base award and then a per pupil allotment based on the actual number of students that return. And finally, the Governor's Emergency Education Relief Fund. GEAR includes a $10 million competitive grant program to support unique or innovative approaches to engage students, teachers, and school communities that address academic accessibility as a result of COVID-19. This program had significant interest with nearly 80 applications. Eight local systems were awarded grants from the programs for a variety of innovative ideas. GEAR also provided additional technology support. The purpose of this $10 million grant program was to support investment in technology. However, any of the CARES Act allowable uses were allowable. It was allocated based on the share of statewide enrollment weighted for at-risk student populations. This grant was primarily used to purchase devices for students and teachers, Wi-Fi hotspots and servers. Also included was external antennas throughout the counties to improve internet access for families. These programs totaled over $427 million. Nearly 70% of these funds were allocated using Title I such that our needy student populations receive the resources they need to be successful. Also as part of GEAR, but not allocated directly to our local school systems, is a broadband project, again managed by the Office of Rural Broadband. This $15 million project will develop a statewide, long-term wireless network specifically for education. The grant agreement with CSM is in the process of being finalized for the construction and operation of the education network. Additionally, MOUs are being established for state agencies that have assets that the Office of Rural Broadband expects to utilize for the network. The following slide is a summary of the federal relief aid awarded to local school systems. And as always, I'm available to answer questions. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. At this time, we'll entertain comments or questions from the board. If you can take down this PowerPoint so that I can see the board members, that would be helpful. Thank you. All right, great. Thank you very much. We appreciate the presentation. Very informative. Comments or observations, questions? We'll start with Ms. Haley, then Ms. McCusker. Please.
I have two questions. One is, I realize that some of these dollars are designated to Title I students as a priority and others go for the general population. So is it, would it be fair, is there a denominator I should use to just say as a general, you know, number, what's going across the state per student? And the second thing would be, can you share with me any funds that are also, are non-public schools, particularly those that are serving Title I students? Are they eligible for any of these funds, both Title I and otherwise?
So Ms. Brandenburg, can you?
Yep.
Sir, please.
Yep, and I hope, in my comments, so the funds were allocated in the same manner as they were allocated in, for fiscal year 2019 for Title I. So it's not on an enrollment per se. It is on, if, if you're a county who got 3% in '19 of the Title I allocation, you'll get 3% of the ESR or the tutoring dollars. I hope that helps. But across the state, if you wanted to just do a general, what was it, you know, dollar per student? It's running about 470, maybe a little bit less. But it really depends on which ones you put in there. But it's, that's what it worked out to be for federal relief aid per student across the state. And then all, most of these funds, the GEAR and the ESR funds, the governor and the elementary education, secondary school funds, those were all subject to equitable services, which means a portion of those funds went to support our non-public schools, which wanted to participate in that program. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. I did, thank you for the presentation. I did have a couple of questions. So my understanding that, that all of these funds were fiscal year '20? Is that correct?
We asked our local school systems when they wanted the funds and we awarded as they responded. So some school systems wanted them in '20 and they, every school system that asked for them in '20 received the ESR funds in '20. School systems who wanted to receive them in '21 got them in '21.
Okay, so they were allocated by a needy school system. Have all of the funds been awarded at this point?
With the exception of the reopening grant, yes.
Has any of that been awarded? Have any of the counties applied for that?
They've all been awarded, yes. The counties have all had to send in applications and we reviewed the applications. There's an off and a back and forth to make sure we understood exactly what they were trying to do with the dollars. And yes, they've all been awarded.
They've all been awarded. Will we see a breakdown of that or a breakdown of the GEAR funds and which counties were awarded? I see we have the total breakdown. Will we see anything for the individual?
I can certainly provide that to you. We do have it.
Thank you. I'd like that. Thank you.
Your mic isn't on, Clarence. I'm assuming you're calling on me, reading your lips.
Senator Bates, yes, thank you.
I've learned to read lips.
Yes, yes.
Sorry about that. Are we gonna get a report on how the various jurisdictions used the funds? I understand that they apply based on how they plan to. I just would like to see kind of a follow-up of how they used it. Are we gonna get that or not?
Yes.
That may be asking too much.
No, no, you're not at all, not at all. I think that's a very important thing and we do have, we are tracking some of that based on their applications that they sent in. But we will be certainly wrapping back around as we see the funds that are being allocated. And we can provide an update to the board once we get to that point where they've spent the funds.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate seeing you.
Dr. Lee, thank you.
Hi, thank you, Mr. Crawford. I just have a question. It doesn't sit well with me, listening to the public comments and, and the comment that was made that there are needs in the local districts and the states not responding. So I'm trying to reconcile that observation with the fact that every local jurisdiction that asked for relief funds has gotten what they asked for. So then how is the state supposed to know that there are more needs if the local jurisdiction's not asking? Or if they've asked and they're getting everything they asked for? What am I not getting? Are we talking about different needs that this isn't covering? Could somebody just explain to me what, how, how does that work? How does it reconcile? Because I don't get it.
Well, Dr. Lee, this is, this is Dr. Salmon. I, I, I can only go by what we're hearing from the local superintendents when we have our meetings and when we are asking them to respond to the, the needs for the grants. And I think they have certainly let us know through their applications what they need. And I feel pretty confident that we've been really, really quick and proactive in getting these funds out to them. And so that's really all I can comment on. I can't, you know, I can't comment on other people's perceptions.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. DeShield?
I'd just like to ask if there are any needs that are going unmet. It seems like the, the grants have all been applied for and the funds have all been dispersed. And maybe that's satisfactory and the local school boards are satisfied. Or maybe there are many more needs that if there was more funding available, that could satisfy the needs in more, more proportionately than the funds already allocated of time.
Well, I think to your point, as we're all looking to Congress for the next allocation of relief funds. And I think going forward, we certainly want to encourage that third wave of relief funds because we don't know how long this will be lasting and we certainly would like to have more funds for the future. And as was noted earlier by Dr. Salins, we do, are concerned about fiscal year 2022. And I think being proactive in knowing that we may need that funding going forward is really important. And all of our congressmen in Maryland are really pushing for this. And we also have a congressional conversation once a week through our office here. And I know the governor is also working on this from his end. So I think we're looking forward to that being resolved, hopefully after this election.
Thank you. Ms. Morrell?
I know one thing that we've, we've heard mentioned over this whole period is talking about HVAC systems and some of the bigger systemic pieces is, is the majority of this money that we're talking about going to operating expenses as opposed to capital programs? Or is, is it kind of whatever the school districts decide they're able to fund with this amount? I know, you know, replacing HVAC systems is a much bigger expense.
Yeah, that's a great question to clarify for everyone, so I'm glad that you brought it up. The construction piece, the, as you say, the infrastructure, the larger items like that come under the IAC, which is the Interagency Commission on School Funding, which is the other board that has responsibility for those capital improvement projects throughout the schools. And those projects are prioritized by the school systems. They bring them forth to the IAC. We just approved over $400 million going out this past December and going into the spring. So that's handled that way. But if, if you remember yesterday, I did speak to the board that I am asking for a report from the IAC. We have a meeting in about a week and a half about the issue of ventilation. So I think it's more their bailiwick. They have the experts over there. And then I'll bring that back to the board after I have a report that goes to the IAC. I'll certainly bring that back to the board. But thank you for clarifying that. These funds are primarily not used for those purposes of construction. That comes from the IAC for the most part.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Seeing none, we thank you very much. This is very, very informative. We thank the board for the questions and comments that they brought forward. Turning it back to you, Dr. Salmon, to move to our next item, the ESSA accountability discussion.
Thank you, President Crawford. This is a presentation that I'm very excited for our staff to make to this board because I think at this point, I may be wrong about this, but I think that only Dr. Lee and maybe the general were a part of our board going through this development of the ESSA plan. I think Dr. Lee is probably the expert on this now. For three and a half years, she sat through all of our meetings where we go, went through all of the metrics for our federal plan that was required. And so I'm anxious to just let the whole board see what we came up with over this three and a half-year period that was marked by so many meetings, so many stakeholder meetings, so many town meetings out in the, in the different parts of the state. And I'm not going to take away Mary's part of the presentation because Mary's going to give you the summary. And Mary was the wonderful leader of this effort. Actually, I was tasked with this effort when I was the deputy superintendent here. And when I became the superintendent, I bequests this to Mary Gable. And thank you, Mary, for taking this over and doing such an amazing job throughout the three and a half years that you worked with the Stakeholder Committee. So I'm going to not say anything more, but turn it over to Mary to give you a little bit of a history lesson on ESSA. Thank you, Mary.
Thank you, and I'm going to work on sharing my slides. Just a second and I should be good to go. And hopefully you are seeing my slides right now.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you to Mr. Crawford, Ms. Haley, and of course, Dr. Salmon. And thank you for the opportunity to lead the work with many, 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 many folks, including you, in this Every Student Succeeds Act. What you were hearing today is going to be, as Dr. Salmon has introduced, is going to be the policy perspective. What is the Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA? You're gonna hear from research, you're gonna hear about accountability, and you're going to hear assessment and how it all fits together. So the first thing that is important to know is, frankly, is that the Elementary and Secondary Education Act goes as far back as 1965. It was, there were reauthorizations, but the ones you're very familiar with, it was President Johnson back at that time, before many of your time. It was then reauthorized by the No Child Left Behind Act that was signed in 2002 by then President Bush. And at this time, we are operating under the Every Student Succeeds Act, which was signed into law in December 2015 by President Obama. This law is the nation's main education law for all public schools. It's the law that holds school accountable, schools accountable for how students learn. And the law provides an equal opportunity for all students and students in special education and all of these student groups. The plan does set into place important targets for schools. And there is important assistance programs for schools that are not meeting the grade. I will share that in some future slides. This, this plan and all of the work that you're going to be seeing today about accountability and assessment and the research was not done in isolation. Maryland developed the ESSA plan after unprecedented outreach to our citizens across the state. First of all, there was an ESSA External Stakeholder Committee. You see before you the numbers of groups that are represented and that were represented and that worked with us hand in hand over the years in order to analyze the law, get feedback, discuss, make decisions, present, present to the state board. And the state board, along with us, went through all of this work and made ultimate decisions regarding that. So you can see the diversity, the teachers, the principals, the stakeholder groups that were involved. The External Stakeholder Committee began meeting and that date, this was March 24, 2016. And this meeting was led by Dr. Salmon, who was and this meeting was led by Dr. Salmon, who was, who was, had the lead on it shortly before she became superintendent. Between 2016 and 2018, I tried to count them all, the committee met 15 times. The committee has continued to meet and we have added some members, which I failed to mention on the previous slide, were asterisks because we've added some members. And we have continued to use this group and will continue to use this group to provide input and to assist in the development of the recovery plan that we have been working through in 2020. We also, as I mentioned, worked with the state board and worked through this, all of this work with the state board. The first meeting was on February 23, 2016, and the board throughout and up to the posting of the first report card in December 2018, the state board was briefed monthly on the submission. And Dr. Salmon mentioned Dr. Lee, who was there for a large number of this work. In addition to an external stakeholder group, we had an internal stakeholder group. There are always those folks that have expertise in particular areas that must be pulled together, and their input was extremely important, their advice, their recommendations throughout the plan. They continue to meet monthly. In addition, there were seven subcommittees. Those committees were on standards and assessment, accountability, the support for our low performing schools, educators, and certification, professional development, equity, and supporting all students. Each of these were chaired or co-chaired by members of the internal committee. However, it, these subcommittees were not made up of internal folks. There were some, but this, these committees also were made up of external stakeholders from across the state. In addition to what I have described, we conducted five evening meetings. We called them ESSA listening tours. They were conducted in January 2017. We conducted them in the areas that you see before you, the five, we took the map. I'm not good on sense of direction, so we had lots of help, but we divided the state up and we went out to individuals across the state on these five different days in January of 2017. Our purpose and my guidance, the folks heard it once, they heard it many, many times. Our purpose was to talk little and to listen a lot. These listening tours were attended by more than 500 parents and community members across the state during that month. What we received during that was additional input. It was conversation in, in classrooms and community colleges where we held these listening tours. In addition to that, we developed and administered ESSA stakeholder surveys, and the purpose of the surveys was, was to ask individual questions that related to the different sections of the law that we had to look, that we had to prepare a plan for. We asked specific questions, gathered input, analyzed that input, projected it, and shared it also with senior staff, with Dr. Salmon, who was very interested in the stakeholders and by the way, came to many of our meetings, including the listening tours, along with the deputies, and shared with the state board. MSD staff, we went out and we would go to any group that would invite us, or we encouraged, please invite us, to 90, more than 90 distinct outreach meetings across the state. Some of these were educational meetings that our folks would be conducting, some were Maryland PTA, some were others. We went to MAVE, we went to, I went to other local school system board meetings and presented and answered questions and listened in order that we gathered input on this plan. So what did we have to do? The requirement of the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is a very large document, was if you boil it all down to some major things, one of them was academic standards. The requirement of the law, and we had to do everything that was in the law and still do, is that we had to set challenging academic standards in the content areas that you see before you, that would prepare our students for college and careers. These standards had to be reviewed, and you as a state board are still talking about the standards. We've talked about them with regard to COVID and recovery and when we first went to virtual learning in the, in the spring, and we are doing virtual learning and hybrid learning and face-to-face instruction now in the fall to address those standards. A second important part of the law is that is annual testing. We are required to assess students in every grade, grades three through eight. They must be assessed annually in English Language Arts and Mathematics. They must also be, and once in high school, excuse me. It's not a particular grade in high school, but they have to be assessed in English Language Arts and Mathematics in high school. They also must be assessed in science by grade bands. So once in elementary, grades three to five, once in middle school, grade six to eight, and once in high school. There's also a requirement, there's an alternative assessment for our students who are in the 1% of our students who must be assessed on an alternative assessment. These students also must be assessed, but they cannot, we cannot assess more than 1% of our students on this. All the other students must be assessed on the comprehensive, their own comprehensive assessments. The third requirement of the law, which is probably 800 or 1,000 pages, is school accountability. This is what we have talked about a lot, which we will be talking about a lot, which we'll be sharing with you and will continue to discuss on how students and how schools are held accountable for the achievement of students. Each state was required to plan to identify underperforming schools, and we must include in our accountability five indicators. Those indicators are listed before you, just go over them quickly. Academic, and you're going to hear a lot about them today, I'm just setting the stage. Your academic achievement, they must be assessed, and we must look at the participation and the performance of students. And not the performance of students in the aggregate, well, how did all the students do? But most importantly, how did each of our individual groups of students do? Whether it's special education, EL, students in poverty, along racial groups, all of these students, all of this data, for girls and boys, all of this data must be broken down. The second item is academic progress. How did our students do? Not in a standalone, let's take a look at their performance this particular school year, but how did they make progress from the previous year to this present year? The third item that is required that you'll hear more about is proficiency of our English Language Learner students. We must include that in our report card, and we must assess students on English proficiency, which we do do. We also must include high school graduation rates. We include a four-year cohort and a five-year cohort. A fifth measure, which was new to accountability, and that was a measure of school quality or student success, and states had a number of ways in order to measure that indicator. Part of what we gathered from our stakeholders was what are the recommendations of those items that would be measured and would be included in school quality and student success? Additionally, another item is we must have goals for academic achievement. So states and Maryland had to set ambitious achievement goals, which means that we have to take a look at where is our baseline of students, and then set annual goals for what students must achieve each year so that we include improvement in performance each year. Another component, and a very critical component, is that we had to support and improve struggling schools. And the first thing that you have to do is identify what are those schools and what schools in Maryland and for every state are struggling. We had to and did identify the comprehensive support and improvement schools, we'll hear as referred to CSI schools. These are the lowest 5% performing schools, these are Title I schools in the state. And in Maryland, we had to take a look at, at the time, there were 430 some, I'm not, I don't recall exactly the number of Title I schools, and we identified 5% of those. At this time, we have 40 CSI schools. They are in three of our local school systems. There are 40, a little bit less because a couple of the schools have closed due to numbers of students and they, the students have been combined in other schools. Also, schools that are included in our CSI group are schools in which the, they are, the high schools in which are graduating less than two-thirds of their students. So there are some high schools in this, and then additionally, some schools in improvement. The second group of schools that we must identify are the targeted support, we call them additional targeted support and improvement schools. And these are schools in which they have student groups that language there is consistently underperforming, but these are student groups that are performing as low as the comprehensive support and improvement schools. There are 372 of these schools, and they are in 24 of our local school systems. Additionally, with regard to these schools, we must support, provide support and technical assistance to these schools. The CSI schools are required to use evidence-based strategies to improve. They must do a needs assessment. What is really going on in the schools? And what is the root cause analysis for what's happening in the schools? They must identify resources to address the inequities. Each of those schools must identify an, an intervention plan, must develop, excuse me, an intervention plan, which had to be approved at the school level, at the school system level, and at the state level. We are still monitoring and providing support, technical assistance, and leadership to these schools. They also had to have their curriculum reviewed and approved because how important it is that the right curriculum is being covered. These are responsibilities for the CSI schools. For the targeted support and improvement schools, we also support them, but the major responsibility of working with the targeted support and improvement schools or the additional targeted support is at the local, is at the local school system level. And the last thing I want to cover that is a requirement of ESSA is that each state, Maryland, and every local school system must publish a report card. Now, you're going to hear that it's a little different this year because, as we know, we did not administer assessments in the spring of 2020 due to the pandemic. But the report cards must show how student, how schools do, and I'm sure you have looked at the report card of the school systems and the schools. Again, the data must be reported by aggregate, but also by student group performance. We must include test score results. We must include school funding information at the state and, at the federal, state, and local level. We must include high school graduation rates. We must include teacher qualifications. These are the highlights of what's in the plan. With many, with respect to all of the remainder of the plan, there are many additional sections, sections on how we're supporting homeless, many sections, how we're supporting before school and after school programs, what we're doing throughout. These are the major highlights for the purpose of today's conversation. In addition to the Every Student Succeeds Act, the federal requirements Maryland also passed in 2017 by the General Assembly, the Protect Our Schools Act. The Protect Our Schools Act included a, a number of requirements. The important requirements to know is that the items that I explained to you before, and I should have called this out, academic indicators, academic progress, graduation rate, and EL performance are among the academic indicators that are right there before you, and we also included readiness for post-secondary success. The, the weight of those, those indicators had to be no larger, no, no higher than 65%. The school quality and student success indicators, which you're going to hear about later from Dara and Chandra, those values were at 35%, and they had to include at least three indicators. So what I've just given you is an overview, hopefully brief, of the Every Student Succeeds Act, how we arrived at the plan and the report card and the accountability and assessment plan that we did. And now I am going to stop sharing my PowerPoint, and I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Shaw, is now, who is now going to take you to a deep dive of the, of our report card and accountability.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Before we start, I know that the board has these sheets available to them. We sent out these one-pagers to outline the contents of our accountability system in great detail. These are meant to be standalone documents for members of the public. These are also available on our website, and I'm going to show you where to find them in a second, but it would be helpful if the board had their sheets to follow along. We also have this document, larger document, which is our user guide, which has much more comprehensive information about the contents of our accountability system. Many thanks to our excellent communications team over the years as we have gone around the state and made sure that schools and school systems and families are familiar with our accountability system. They have put together these beautiful-looking documents to help the public and to help our stakeholders understand exactly what is in our accountability system. So that's what I'm going to be referring to as we go along. I'm going to go ahead and share my PowerPoint now. I'm going to talk you through two things. The first is, I'm going to talk you through the contents of our accountability system. So Mary talked pretty broadly about, well, we have to hold schools accountable for academic achievement. I'm going to explain exactly what that means. The second thing that I'm going to do is I'm going to explain where to find all of this information and more on our report card. Part of ESSA's requirement is not only do we develop an accountability system, but also that this information is public, transparent, and disaggregated by student group. And so I'm going to show you where Maryland has that information, and I'm also going to show you where Maryland has gone kind of above and beyond state and federal requirements in terms of what we report and how. So for members of the public who are following along, this is mdreportcard.org. And as you can see, I just held up the accountability one-pagers and also the user's guide, but this is where to find them on our website. Here's our user guide. So first, I'm going to go through exactly what it is that we hold our elementary schools accountable for. I'm going to go into more detail here, and then some of this is going to repeat for our middle and high schools, some overlap, some not. So our accountability system for elementary schools is worth 100 points. You can see that number in the upper right-hand corner of the screen. Each of these color-coded boxes corresponds to one of those large required areas that Mary talked about. So first, I'm going to talk about academic achievement. Academic achievement in English Language Arts and Math for elementary schools is worth 20 points out of 100. That's that number on the right-hand side. Specifically, this breaks down into five, five points each for some smaller...
Specifically, this breaks down into five, five points each for some smaller, what we call measures. We, schools can earn five points for the percent of students scoring proficient or higher on their ELA test. They can earn five points for the average performance level on their English Language Arts test. We did these two different ways because proficient or higher is just an absolute number. Our state standardized tests are on a five-point scale, proficient, so if your score proficient, just a cut. But we also wanted to account for students who were not quite proficient. So that's why we have both of these. But taken together, ELA scores are 10 points. And then the same thing for math, five points for the percent of students scoring proficient or higher on math, and five points for the average performance level on math. Next, we have academic progress for elementary schools. Now, academic progress is a required indicator again under the federal, under, under the ESSA law. However, there's a little bit of a trick to this because under ESSA, we are only allowed to put math and English Language Arts under academic achievement. So, I'm sorry, Mary's bringing, can I share it? In the loop, is it not big? Mary is asking, oh, there we go. We're, we're, we're not physically in the same room, but she just came and poke, poke her head into my office. Does this look okay for everybody? Can I have a thumbs up from board members?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, great.
No, I'm sorry, Dr. Shaw, if you could put it as a slideshow, that makes it bigger. Right now, we're seeing something different. You had it a second ago. Okay. Hey, do it as a slideshow. Slideshow. It is a slideshow. No, go. I think Mary knows what I mean.
I think it's a different program than the one we use, Dr. Green.
Oh, okay.
I think it's not the, the, the older version, unfortunately. I did see it larger, but I think it flipped back to the, to, out of this, out of the actual presentation mode.
So do, do you like it the way it is now or no?
Well, if you can make it any bigger, it would be helpful.
Let's see. If Mary, if you're back in your office, you can go ahead and take over and I'll just ask Mary to change the slides if that's easier. I want to make sure that you guys can see it, see it properly. This is what happens when I come into my office and use the big, big setup. I think you're seeing.
Look at the screen, Dr. Shaw, but not on some of ours. So let's just pause for a second because this is very important information and I want the board to be able to see it well and also the public to be able to see it to refresh everybody's memory about the system.
No problem. So Mary, if you're back in your office, if you would like, she came and walked over to mine and stuck her head in. But Mary, if you're back in your office, once you're back, would you mind taking over the screen sharing? We are on slide 13 and I'll just ask you to advance the slides to make sure that you're all able to see it properly.
Excuse me, Dr. Shaw, what you're showing corresponds to this document that was.
Yeah, it's right, it's right there. That same document.
Thank you.
I'm not sure Mary is back in her office yet. Chandra might be able to take over as well.
So why don't you go ahead with what you was on your screen and then when someone gets back. There we go. Chandra's taking over here.
Thank you. Chandra, we're on slide 13. Does that look all right? Okay, good, thumbs up. This is what happens when the researcher has the fancy computer. It doesn't quite look right for everybody else. But that's, that's why we have a lot of backup. Okay, so we are on slide 13, which was academic achievement. Keep going back, 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 back. There's a lot of repetition here. We don't need to go through all these. There we go. Okay. So this is academic achievement for elementary schools, which I went through, 10 points for English Language Arts and 10 points for math. We go to the next slide. This is academic progress for English Language Arts and Math, which is 25 points, as you see on the right-hand side. This is how much students have grown from the previous year in English Language Arts and Math. So you might have students who are below proficiency but exhibiting high growth. You might have schools where the students are highly proficient but aren't growing from year to year. So both proficiency and growth are included in our accountability system. So growth is worth 25 points, 12 and a half for English Language Arts, and 12 and a half for math. In this academic progress indicator, we also have two other, two other scores under this credit for completion of a well-rounded curriculum. This is what I meant when I said these two aren't actually growth. It's not this year to last year, but the federal government wouldn't let us put them anywhere else, so here they are. We have five points for the percent of students scoring proficient or higher in science. Those are our fifth grade students. Remember, ESSA requires that we test students in science once in elementary school. We also have five points for the percent of students earning credit in social studies, fine arts, physical education, and health. Maryland Protect Our Schools Act wanted to make sure that we held schools accountable for students earning credit for completing a well-rounded curriculum. So it's not just their test scores in ELA and math. It's not just their growth in ELA and math, but also whether they are earning credit in these other courses in social studies, fine arts, physical education, and health. Next slide, please. The fifth indicator for the accountability system for elementary schools is worth 10 points out of 100, and this is progress in achieving English language proficiency. This refers specifically to our students who are English language learners. And it is the percent of our English learner students that are on track to attaining English language proficiency. This is separate from the state standardized tests in English Language Arts. I know that it's, the, the two can get confused. But this indicator is specifically for English learner students and it is about their proficiency in learning the English language. This is a required indicator by federal law, by ESSA, and it's worth 10 points out of 100. Next, please. Finally, we have school quality and student success. These are indicators and, and measures that are part of this very diverse accountability system. And the main difference between these and everything else that I just went through is that none of these measurements rely on a test score of any kind. They don't rely on a test score for students. They don't even rely on a course grade for students. The first, the first measure here is chronic absenteeism. A student is chronically absent if they're absent at least 10% of the school days. So we don't want that to happen. So we give schools 15 points out of 100 for the percent of their students who are not chronically absent. We also have a school survey of students and educators, and that is worth 10 points out of 100 for elementary schools. For those of you who are in the education world, this is a school climate survey. However, we don't call it a climate survey because people thought we were talking about the weather in the school building. So, so, but, but for those of you who are, who are familiar with the education jargon, this is a, 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 a survey about the quality and culture with the, within the school. It's a school climate survey. Asks about student-teacher relationships and students-student relationships and respect and care and trust and whether students feel like their voices are being heard and questions about safety and bullying and that kind of. Finally, again, part of the Protect Our Schools Act, we wanted to make sure that we were holding schools accountable for the percent of students that had access to a well-rounded curriculum. So it's not just whether students are passing their courses, but whether those courses are being offered to students in the first place. So for elementary schools, 10 points out of 100, it's the percent of fifth grade students who are enrolled in science, social studies, fine arts, physical education, and health. Okay, next slide, please. I'm going to pause before I move on to the middle school. It's a lot of repetition, so that will go a lot more quickly, but I'll pause for questions about the contents of the accountability system for elementary schools.
Would members, since the PowerPoint is still up, if you would identify yourself by name and then, well, you can then ask the questions. Not able to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Crawford.
This is Laura Morrow. I have one quick question. Just on the English language proficiency, slide 15, is there a minimum number of students the school has to have that are in that category to get that score? Like if there's only 10 students, then each kid ends up being responsible for one point, essentially?
Yes, that's correct. So there's a, there is a minimum for this. There's actually a minimum for all of these. And it's, it's the same minimum and it's a minimum end size of 10 students. The exception for that is graduation rate, which I believe is 35. And Chandra can give me a thumbs down if that's incorrect. But for, for all of them, the minimum end size is, is 10. And so for example, if you only have, if you have a very small school with only nine fifth graders who are, you know, taking the science test, then that indicator would be removed as well from, from the school. So it's the minimum end size is 10.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions or comments?
I had a question for Mel Green.
Yes, Dr. Green.
Dr. Shaw, you said that our system is over and above what is required. In what areas and what ways is our system above that?
That's a great question. I will hopefully answer it when I get to the reporting side of things. If I don't, please bring it back around to me. I will say that when we're talking about the contents of our accountability system, states have some flexibility for what they can have. So for example, they must have academic achievement, they must have academic progress. They do not need, they must test in science, but they don't have to include science in their accountability system. We do. The addition of the access to and credit for a well-rounded curriculum, that is over and above federal requirement. And then the other place where we have flexibility is in that orange set of indicators on school quality and student success, where there actually is no requirement for what you put in there. And so this is what Maryland has chosen. And then in terms of data reporting, we do a whole lot more than what is required and I'll get to that when I get to the second half. Thank you. Yep.
Any questions at this point? If not.
I'm sorry. Sorry, this is Holly. When I looked at each county, it looks like a lot of these are not being met. If you just look at the overall data, when I go into the website, by each county, which is alarming, like for Baltimore City, they were especially bad. So I don't know if you're going to get to that, the results of this at some point.
It's, it's a good question. So the purpose of today's presentation is to show you the content and, and where to find the information, both for you and for the Piblin. Traditionally do summary presentations once the data come out annually. And so the last time we did that was when this was during our, our last presentation. And so there's quite a, a large amount of, of summary information that was December, about nine months ago, which was when we, when this was last presented, when it was last updated. So we weren't planning on showing you summary information today, but it is certainly available.
Dr. Shaw, perhaps at a future time, we could dive into that. And I'm, consistent with, with Dr. Wilcox's question, my question is, so we're now getting data that shows there are issues. The question I have is, so what are we doing about it? I mean, what's, what's being done at the local school systems? What, where do they need help? Are there things that we could do at the board to assist them in addressing the issues? I know that's not part of today's discussion, but maybe in a future meeting, we could take that deeper dive and to figure out what's going on and how, how we can help, how the local school systems can help.
Mr. Crawford, I just, this is Dr. Salmon. I just want to weigh in for a quick minute. You're right, that's not part of our presentation today. We're trying to get the board to understand what is, what is, what is the accountability system? What is our ESSA plan overall? And then we'll talk later in December about what we might need to do in terms of looking at the data coming up for this coming year and moving forward in that fashion. So these are all good questions and it shows that you guys are really thinking about these issues. They're important issues for school accountability. I can just briefly give you the information about what we're doing with the schools that are comprehensive, school improvement schools and targeted school improvement. These schools have plans, they're required to be monitored. So we do have a certain segment to answer Dr. Wilcox's concern that are working with these schools that are not performing where they need to be. And we're providing a lot of technical assistance and a lot of funding to these schools. But we can circle back around in a, in an upcoming board meeting to discuss this in more detail. So very good questions. Thank you.
Senator Bates.
Thank you. I would like to applaud the, the board or the department's staff for, as I would say, making lemonade out of the lemons the legislature handed to them. I really, really, I remember being back there on the committee looking at it and they'd tried their best to water down these. And I think you guys have done an outstanding job in keeping the focus on the students and, and what they need to know and how we can make sure that they're there. I just, again, a big thumbs up to, to the department's staff and the work they've done. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. And, and I just want to remark that the Senator and I attended a conference together a couple of years ago where we were in the midst of all the states were getting their ESSA plans approved. And so we spent three or four days together, you know, working through this and getting feedback on what was happening across the nation. And that's when you were a Senator in the legislation. And so you have been involved in this, not on the state board, but certainly from the aspect of the legislative aspect. And we certainly appreciated your assistance during that time that we were going through this process.
I have the scars to prove it. Thank you.
Are there any other questions or comments at this point? I can't.
I don't, yeah, I don't think you can see me, but so this is Jeanne Halli, I'd like to have a couple of comments. One is the department gave an excellent report, an update report to the board, and it might be helpful to share that presentation with board members just so that they can come up, you know, especially the newer board members, so they can see the past performance. And the second is, it's, I think that this is really a timely presentation because this whole accountability system was developed under a different environment. And so I'm hopeful, I, I know that the department's thinking about this. I don't think you're prepared yet to, to speak to it, but I think that the board needs to be thinking about it as well. Are there changes that we need to look at recommending to this accountability system given that we're going to be in a different environment going forward as well? And are there changes that the department will be recommending in that, in that spirit as well?
The answer is yes. That's a great cue set, Ms. Hallie, to the December and January board meetings. So thank you for that.
Excellent. Are there any other questions or comments? If so, speak up because I cannot see you.
From Mel Green?
Yes, Dr. Green.
One other comment, and I don't know if I'm getting ahead of your presentation, Dr. Shaw, but is there a place for disaggregated data on this report card or is that not part of the report card?
There most certainly is. And, and I will absolutely demonstrate that because it's, it's something, the degree to disag, of disaggregation that we offer is something that we are particularly proud of and the way we demonstrate equity. And so I will absolutely be getting to that.
Wonderful. Wonderful.
Thank you.
If no other comments or questions, Dr. Shaw, please continue.
Great. So hopefully the next two will go a little bit more quickly now that you have a understanding of what goes into the system. This is your one pager from middle schools. You'll notice on the upper right hand corner that this is, this is the only grades span that is not out of 100 points. And I'll explain why that is when we get to it, but it's almost out of 100 points. We, we developed the accountability system to be out of 100, but then there were a couple of pieces of it that we have to phase in over time. So first academic achievement for middle school is worth 20 points. Next slide, please. Academic achievement for middle school is worth 20 points. This is exactly the same as it is for the elementary schools. So 10 points for English Language Arts and 10 points for math. Shandra, if you wouldn't mind going ahead. There we go. 10 points for ELA, 10 points for math, worth 20 points total, exactly the same. Next slide, please. Academic progress for middle schools is almost exactly the same as it is for, for the elementary schools. So academic progress for the middle schools is 25 points for growth in English Language Arts and Math. I think we seem to be a slide ahead, but that's all right. We have our cheat sheet. Here we go. 25 points for growth in English Language Arts and Math. And then we have that credit for completion of a well-rounded curriculum, which is where we're forced to put kind of this other stuff. So we have three and a half points for proficiency in science, again, like the elementary school. Here we have three and a half points for proficiency in social studies and then three points for credit in ELA, math, social studies and science. So the reason that middle school doesn't add up to 100 yet is because we are still ruling out our social studies exam for our eighth graders. And so that's, those, those points will be available in the accountability system when that test, when those results are able to be included. Next slide, please. For middle schools, English Language Proficiency, exact same as elementary schools. For our English Language Learners, 10 points. Next, please. And then we have our School Quality and Student Success, those 35 points that have nothing to do with test scores or grades. Chronic absenteeism, again, 15 points. That school survey, again, 10 points. And then access to a well-rounded curriculum. Percent of students enrolled in fine arts, PE, health and computational learning. So almost exactly the same. Finally, for our high school, we've got our one pager again. This is worth 100 points. This is slightly different from the elementary and middle schools, mostly because we have graduation rating there. So next slide, please. Academic achievement, again, same thing. This for high schools is worth 30 out of 100, so slightly more. But half the points for English Language Arts and half the points for math, exactly the same as before. Next slide, please. Now instead of growth for high school, remember, we only test students one time in high school. So we don't have a first year and a second year. We don't have two scores for them in high school. But for high school, we do have graduation rate. And so schools receive 10 points for their four-year graduation rate and an additional five points for their five-year graduation rate, for a total of 15 out of 100. Next, please. English Language Proficiency for English Learner Students, again, same, 10 out of 100. Next, please. We also, this is again where our accountability system goes beyond what was required. We added our own indicator. We called it readiness for post-secondary success and the U.S. Department of Education said that was fine. So this is worth a total of 10 points out of the 100. First, we have a measure called on track in ninth grade. This is a research-based measure that shows that you can predict whether a student is on track to graduate based on their coursework and, and their credits earned in ninth grade. So schools earn five points for the percent of their ninth grade students who earn at least four credits in ELA, math, science, social studies and/or world language. So they have five courses listed there and they need to earn at least four credits towards those graduation requirements. We also have five points for the percent of students completing high school and earning credit for achieving some other academic benchmark. They have a lot of options here because we wanted to make sure that we hold our schools accountable for giving our 12th grade, or giving our students credit for completing a well-rounded curriculum, but in a lot of different ways. So schools can earn credit on this measure for students who receive a three or better on an AP test or a four or better on an IB test or achieving what SAT or ACT has determined to be their college-ready scores. Or by earning credit for dual enrollment or by meeting their university system of Maryland entry requirements or by completing an apprenticeship training program or by completing an industry certification aligned with a CTE program or by completing an approved CTE program or by achieving a score of 31 or higher on the Armed Services Vocational Aptitude Battery Test or by completing a seal of biliteracy or for our special education students with the greatest need, those students earning a high school certificate of program completion, students who have achieved gainful employment, post-secondary education and training or supported employment. This is a whole list of ways that any high school student may demonstrate that they have earned credit for completing a well-rounded curriculum. Next slide, please. Finally, our 35 points that have nothing to do with test scores or grades. Again, 15 for chronic absenteeism, 10 points of them for the school survey and another 10 points for access to a well-rounded curriculum. If you could go to the next slide, please. Here's the list. These are, again, we wanted to give schools credit for giving the students opportunities. And so these are for the percent of students enrolled in an AP course. The other measure was whether they passed the test or not. This is just whether they were enrolled in the course, enrolled in an IB course, participated in dual enrollment, enrolled in CTE. So this one you can think of as the more opportunity for a well-rounded curriculum. And then the other one is whether they actually passed the test or earned some credit. Okay, that is the end of the content of our accountability system. The next thing that I'm going to show you is where to find all of this data and more. So this is what our schools are held accountable for. But how do you know how any school or school system actually did on the, on, on these measures? Now, I don't normally, it's funny, when I was, when I was teaching, I always told my students that I didn't expect them to have a, a perfect detention span because I don't. So if you would prefer, I'm going to do this based on screenshots so that everybody can be on the same literal page as me. But if you would prefer, or if you have a big monitor in front of you, to do this for yourself live, if you want, please feel free to go to mdreportcard.org and follow along live and click on things yourself and, you know, explore as I'm going through the presentation.
Dr. Shaw?
Yes.
If you wouldn't mind, I think we're at about two hours in. This might be a, if you don't mind, an opportunity to take about a 10-minute break and then we come back, if that's, if that's acceptable?
I didn't think it was up to me.
Well, I just want to make sure that it's okay. We could, seems like this would be a good place to, to take a break as we're going to dive back into, to, to the presentation.
This is a great place for a break, Mr. President Crawford. You know, Dr. Shaw was waiting for me to shake my head.
Yes, I was. Thank you.
So let's take a 10-minute break. We're going to start back promptly in 10 minutes. Great presentation. Thank you.
Okay, we should be starting to return about now. Welcome back, everyone. Okay. We're starting shortly. Okay. Dr. Shaw, I think we're ready whenever you are.
Great, thank you. So as we, as I demonstrate mdreportcard.org, I would just like to make the point. I just demonstrated or explained to you what was in the accountability system, but that was the work of many, many hundreds of people. Many of them much more insightful, most of them, all of them, much more insightful or smarter than I am when it comes to these things. I'm your mouthpiece here, but I don't want to imply that this work is mine and especially for mdreportcard.org, which is where to find all of this data about Maryland schools and school systems. I most definitely do not want to take any kind of ownership for that. That is a great, great Herculean effort of our Accountability Office and also our Communications Team, so want to thank all of them for that work as well. So I'm going to walk you through mdreportcard.org, which is where to find all of the accountability and accountability data and other data from our Accountability System and beyond. So if we could go on to the first slide. If you go to mdreportcard.org, you're able to view data at the state, the school system, or the school level. Now, as I walk you through where to find data, you can start to type in any school that you want here. The school that I picked to demonstrate is a Baltimore City School called Federal Hill Prep. It's not because there's anything particularly unique about this school, I'm not trying to call them out. They just happen to be geographically the closest school to where I'm sitting here at MSD. And so they are a good example of what the report card looks like. But here at MSD in downtown Baltimore, there are no actual schools because there aren't too many residences here in the downtown core. But if you go about a mile away from here, there are a great many residences and a great many schools and this happens to be one of them. So let's take a look at Federal Hill Prep. Now, when you type in their name, it will take you, go ahead, Shandra, it will take you to their report card. So you can see that that tab is highlighted on the top of the page. So that is the first page that you see if you type in the name of any school. Next slide, please. The first piece of information that you're going to see is the school's overall score on the Accountability System that I just showed you. So right there in the bottom portion of the screen circled, it says that this school earned 57% out of its total possible points. For this school, the total possible points happened to be 90 and not 100, I'll get to that in a second. You see this school earned 57 points, that was its total, 57%, that was its total score. You also see, circled on the upper right-hand corner, that this school earned three out of five stars. We give schools a star rating based on their total percentage of their points earned. So to be a five-star school, you have to earn at least 85% of the points, et cetera, moving on down. So this school, 57%, is three out of five. It's a way of interpreting that 57%. The other piece of final information or overall score that we present about each school is their percentile rank. That is where the school ranked in relation to all of the other elementary schools in the state. So you look at that 57% and you say, is that better, higher achieving than most schools? Or lower achieving than most schools? Or about the same as most schools? That percentile rank gives you that answer. So for this school, this means that 31, this school scored better than 31% of the other elementary schools in the state, which means that 69% of the elementary schools in the state scored better on the Accountability System than this. So it just gives you an idea of the relative ranking of the schools. Next slide, please. The other thing that this very first page of the report card will show you is how the school did on each of those large indicators that we just went through. So academic achievement, I said was worth 20 possible points for elementary schools and this school earned a 10.7 out of 20. Now, how did they earn that 10.7? That we will go into more detail in a second, but this is just how did my school do overall? Academic progress, 35 points, and this school earned 15.7 points, et cetera. Now, I said this school only had a total of 90 possible points out of 100 because this school did not have enough English learner students for us to include that progress in achieving English language proficiency for English learner students. And so, as was asked earlier, that measure is not included for this school. Now, on the right-hand side, you also see whether the school met annual targets for the 18, 19 school year. As Mary said, ESSA requires us to set annual targets for each school. And this school did meet its annual target for academic achievement. What that amounts to, it varies from school to school, but we basically were asked that schools make approximately two percentage points of progress, that their proficiency rate goes up by about two percentage points every year in academic achievement, in math and ELA. Again, that number varies from school to school because we're trying to get schools all to the same long-term goal. But this school did meet its annual targets. It also improved over last year. And that's what that second category column tells you, is did the school, maybe they didn't meet their annual target, but they still did better than they did last year. Or in the case of school quality and student success, we don't actually have an annual target, but the school still did better than they did last year on school quality and student success. That improvement column gives you a snapshot of how the school did compared to the previous year. Next slide, please. If you keep scrolling down the report card, you can see breakdowns for each of those large buckets. So remember that academic achievement is actually worth, is actually made up of four smaller components, each worth five points, if you remember that from your one pager. So in this school, this school, 45% of its students were proficient in math and 48% of its students were proficient in English Language Arts. And its average performance level in math and ELA was a three for both of those areas. And so again, you see the breakdown of how this school did on each of these smaller areas of the Accountability System. Next slide, please. So we, again, we show you the true result, as in how many, what percentage of students were proficient and also how many points they earned. Next slide, please. Results for all of the indicators are shown. So again, if you're actually on the website, you just scroll right down the page and here is progress towards achieving English language proficiency, which again, not enough data to provide accountability results, there aren't English learner students at this school. And school quality and student success, there's chronically absent, the results of the school survey, and access to a well-rounded curriculum. So in this particular indicator, the school earned 25 out of 35 possible points. Next slide, please. We also show subtotals for the academic and the non-academic indicators. So for those school quality and student success, again, 25 out of 30. For the academic measures, which were, as you recall, anything that requires a test score or a grade to figure out, this school earned 26 out of 55. Next slide, please. Now, this report card is available in multiple languages and is available both online and to download. And so depending on your preference, you can look at it in a variety of different ways. Next slide, please. Next, we are required to show, to disaggregate by student group. And so if you go under Report Card Details and click on Student Group Info, this is how the exact same data that I just showed you, except for African-American students as a student group at the school. So African-American students earned 49% out of a possible, 49% their total possible was 87. Next slide, please. Now, this is something that is unique to Maryland. We are not required to do this, but we didn't just think, we thought that it was not enough to report out by student group, but that we wanted to report specifically on equity. And so equity reports are also available for all student groups. This shows side by side how each student group did in one column and then how students not in that group did in the other column. And then we calculate the difference in performance right there for you at the bottom in bold. And so we put this right out in front of our report card, that it wasn't just enough to meet the federal requirements for disaggregation, but that we also wanted to highlight differences between students in each group and students not in each student group. Next slide, please. This is, again, something that is unique to Maryland. So on the front page of the report card, if you remember, I told you that this school was in the 31st percentile across the entire state. But you might say, the state of Maryland has a lot of elementary schools in it. How did this school do compared to schools that had similar student demographics and other characteristics? So how did this school do not compared to every elementary school in the state, but how did it do in comparison to a group of similar schools based on grades span, race, ethnicity, economic disadvantage, English learners, and students with disabilities? And so under Report Card Details, if you click on Similar Schools, you can see that, remember, this school earned 57% of its points, that's there in the left-hand column? And if you compare that to a group of similar schools only, the average performance for that group of similar schools was 54.4%. So compared to every school in the state, this school was in the 31st percentile, but compared to a group of similar schools only, this elementary school is actually outperforming them. And so you have different ways of understanding overall school performance. And again, this is something that is unique to Maryland, it is not required by ESSA, and it's right there under our, in our Report Card Details. Next slide, please. Now, MD Report Card has a large amount of other data besides accountability data. So above and beyond what's on this sheet of paper, you go to MD Report Card to find out, first of all, some basic enrollment or other demographic characteristics about the school. Data can be disaggregated by student group and can be shown as a trend or as a single year. So again, this is still Federal Hill Prep, this is their enrollment data shown as a trend from over the last five years. The gray line is all students in the school, and so you see this, this school has about 350 students. The blue line is the number of, I just picked one, is the number of African-American students in the school. So this, this school is about two-thirds African-American students. You can just, you can pull down from the menus, any student group that you would like to see. Next slide. We also, is that the next one? That's what happens when I'm not controlling it, there we go. We have, so we have enrollment data, we have attendance data here. This is again, available for all students and by student group. This one that I'm showing you here is chronic absenteeism for all students, that's the gray line, and in this case, I chose students with disabilities, that's the blue line. So you can see that there was a difference in chronic absenteeism for those groups over the last few years, but actually in 2019, once we started holding schools accountable for chronic absenteeism. Incidentally, the chronic absenteeism rates for students with disabilities matched that for the rest of the school. Just an example of all of the data that you can find here. Next slide, please. Some elements on MD Report Card are required by state or federal law, per pupil expenditures is one of them, this is something that Mary mentioned, this is required by ESSA that we report on our website, and so you can find that broken down by federal and state and local funding for every single school in the state. Next, please. If you click on the tab that says MCAP, now if you remember, for accountability, we put all students into the same bucket. We say the percent of students who are proficient on a particular test for all the students in the school that took that test. But what if you want to know just for third graders, or just for fifth graders, or just for Algebra I, not for all math, but for Algebra I? Or you want to know just for African-American female third graders? If you click on MCAP, you can find all of that information. So this is for this particular school, their ELA, their English Language Arts results for third grade, just in 2009, they had, they were for performance level four and five, which is proficient, that's there on the right-hand side, they were about 55% proficient just for their third-grade students on the ELA III test. Next, please. We can disaggregate, so this is African-American male students for ELA III, English Language Arts, the third-grade test, and again, we can show it as a trend also. So the gray line, all students, and the blue line, African-American male students. I also want to say that all of this information, I'm showing it to you as a website or showing it to you as a graph, but it's also all available for download at the individual school level, so you can download it if you prefer to see it that way as well. Next slide, please. Now, if you really want to see all the data, you go back to the main page, mdreportcard.org, and click on Data Downloads. This is the, the data nerd like myself, this is our favorite part of the website, because the graphs are great, but the graphs show each school one at a time. Let's say you want all of them. So if you click on Data Downloads, next slide, please, you will see every piece of data that populates this entire website and more, available as a giant spreadsheet with every single school in the state, data for every school in every data point. So Accountability Data will give you the, for example, the star ranking and the percentile rank for every school in the state in one data file. Accountability Details will give you the score on each of the indicators for every school in the state, all in one data file. Same thing for graduation rate, dropout rate, attendance data. There's a bunch of things that I didn't even show you because we only have so much time, but we have data files, for example, for educator Um, but we have data files, for example, for educator qualification data. We have high school completion data, which is, again, we didn't go into it. Um, next slide, please. There were too many on this list, so it needs two slides. Um, let's say you want that per pupil expenditure data for every school in the state. There it is. You can download it in one giant file. Um, we have school survey results, not just final scores, but I said the survey is broken down into a bunch of different topics, bullying, safety, relationships. You can download this survey subscores for students and teachers for every school in the state in one giant data file. Um, so data nerds love this, researchers love this, reporters love this. Um, but beyond that, it's um useful for our, for educators to look and see how every school in the state is doing. Um, I will say that a, as an aside, I don't want to take credit for any of this because I'm just happening to be the person talking about it. Um, but we have gone around the state and shown this to all kinds of different audiences. Everyone from who you would call the, the data folks, the, the local assessment and accountability coordinators at the school systems, on down to presenting this in our mdreportcard.org to teachers and principals. Um, one of my favorite days of the year, in case they're watching. One of my favorite days of the year is when I go to the seed school. Um, they have asked for the last three years for us to come and do a presentation on the data that are available, and then they get their hands on that data and they do a workshop right while we're there. Um, and so we have had an enormous amount of positive feedback on the amount of data that we have available, the way that you can access it, either via this point-and-click web interface or by going to these data downloads, um, that, that it has provided a lot of value to our educators and to the public um since we rolled this brand-new website out two, two and a half years ago. Um, so with that, I will, I'm a, about to turn it over to Chandra, um, who's gonna talk about what will be reported um in the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year.
Okay, so am I on? Hello?
Yes.
Okay, good. Yeah, so it's always so exciting to uh hear people talk about using the data that is on the report card. Um, there is a tremendous amount of work that goes into just getting the data from the local school systems and working with um communication and other folks at MSD and across the state in regards to how to present that information. So it's always good to hear um somebody's excitement in using the data. So today, um, I'm going to uh briefly talk about the reporting timeline for data from the two thousand and nineteen, twenty year. Um, and it's, today I'm going to talk specifically about what is required in the Every Student Succeeds Act. I know Dara mentioned quite a bit of other data that is available, but I'm gonna focus specifically on that Every Student Succeeds Act requirement or ESSA requirements. So as we know, two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year was a, an unprecedented year. So the abrupt school closures across the country did have an impact on the data that is available to report and for use in the Maryland's accountability system. I know that the, we've had two years for using the accountability data, and we were just getting started on using um the, all the different measures, but there is going to be an impact in what data is available. The impact was national, um, and all fifty states ended up requesting and receiving one-year waivers for specific requirements of the Every Student Succeeds Act. And that's just um listing out each of the different um pieces of the waivers, which I'm gonna go through on the next few slides, too. So one of the first waivers uh Maryland received is the waiver to administer all the assessments in the school year two thousand and nineteen and twenty and to report on that information. With the abrupt closure of the schools, Maryland was unable to administer the assessments, and so we will not be able to report on the assessments since we were not able to give them. The accountability requirement was also waived, um, which basically means that Maryland um is not required to differentiate the schools um and report this information for the fall of two thousand and twenty. In addition, uh, the requirement to identify schools, I think this was mentioned earlier uh by Mary in regards to uh CSI and TSI schools, uh, the requirement to identify schools based on the data from two thousand and nineteen, twenty was waived. However, schools receiving supports during the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school year must and will continue to receive the supports and interventions for this twenty, twenty-one school year. Uh, those supports will continue for those identified schools. Uh, and finally, one of the waivers was on reporting information specific to assessment and accountability. Um, I'm not gonna, to go through and read these, much, much of these are what was presented by um Dr. Shaw in regards to uh what we are required to report for this year. Um, so due to the pandemic and the um the waivers that were afforded to us by the U.S. Department of Education, um, Maryland is not going to be releasing new accountability results based on the two thousand and nineteen, twenty school years. Um, what we are planning right now is in December to provide a message on the Maryland Report Card, similar to what you see here. We are continuing to work on the appropriate messaging um for all areas in which the data is not going to be available to report. And we have, um, we're working on additional communication material over the next few years, I mean, the next few weeks to release in December as well. Um, but I do want to just also point out that the Every Student Succeeds Act required states to publish more data than ever before. For those of you that have worked with us in implementing the Every Student Succeeds Act, there was a tremendous amount of data that has been added to the Maryland Report Card um as Dr. Shaw just showed you, and the waivers did not waive all of the reporting requirements. It is important to note um that I made a couple comments. We did not um administer the NAEP data. That is a federal administration of a test, but we will not have um NAEP data. In the Civil Rights Data Collection, there is no new data. Um, that is actually a data collection that's specific to the local school systems, directly to the Office of Civil Rights. So the um, the requirement is to publish the most recently available data, which we will continue to do. Um, the other items here, cohort graduation rate, dropout rate, post-secondary outcomes, per pupil expenditures, educator qualifications, all of those were not waived. And we, um, on the next slide, I have provided a timeline for when we um are expecting that data to be published on the report card. Um, there are additional items, as Dr. Shaw pointed out, in regards to enrollment information, attendance. Um, there's quite a few other information on the report card that we will also continue to roll out over the next few months. Um, this presentation just highlights specifically what is required in ESSA, and this provides the timeline for when that data will be released. So that is very brief in regards to um what ESSA is requiring. And thank you for the opportunity to provide that. I am going to turn it back over to Dr. Shaw. Um, he's going to highlight um what we refer to as the first-term performance metrics. I think we all acknowledge that data is very, very important, particularly in our current state. And so we have been working on collecting and reporting additional data this year above and beyond what ESSA may require. I can take questions, but um if there are questions, but at this point, I'm gonna turn it back over to Dr. Shaw as well.
Yep, uh, this is quite quick, um, because we, we went through this yesterday, but all of that to say that we understand um that we do need to get information about how our schools are doing now. Um, and so this is just to remind you of what those first-term performance metrics are. Um, next slide, please. We went over all of these uh yesterday, so we have a, part A is we have a set of questions um about the recovery plan implementation, um, things like training and number of school days, synchronous instruction, et cetera. Um, next slide, please. We also have questions about student attendance, uh disaggregated by school grade span and by uh student group. Next, please. Um, data, other data that we are collecting is student results on the start-of-year diagnostic. As you recall, the recovery plan requires that school systems um administer some type of diagnostic to guide their instruction, to understand where students are and where they need to be. Um, and so we are collecting the results of the um start-of-year student diagnostics or the, the uh local school system's estimated results um for students who are um below, at, and above expectation. Next slide, please. Uh, finally, we have some implementation narrative questions. We're asking them about uh the way that they are implementing the plan. What this amounts to is um, these questions mirror what is in their plan, but the plan is the plan, and we want to know um how they are implementing their plan, including uh parts of their plans that they have not implemented, um, and, and why? Because in most cases, there are some good reasons why. Most, mostly those reasons are because when we wrote the plan, we um didn't have a good understanding of what we were facing, and we were able to make some positive adjustments. Uh, but also so that we understand the ways in which we need to support them um moving forward. And uh finally, we're asking them about in-person instruction and the circumstances under which that took place, and all of this will be compiled into an imple, implementation narrative. Um, and so understanding that we are missing some uh data that we normally collect from this year and from last year, we have these first-term performance metrics to provide us with some um up-to-the-minute estimates of where school systems are and, um, and where they can be supported. Thank you. That's it.
Excellent presentation, uh.
So we s, we still have um one remaining section, which is, I'm gonna turn it over in a second to Jennifer Judkins, who are, is our Assistant Superintendent for uh Assessment, Accountability, and Information Technology. Um, but I think if it's okay with Dr. Salmon, this is a good place to pause for questions on what we have presented, if there are any, before we move on to um assessment, or at least that was the plan that we were given.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Shaw. That's a good suggestion. And I think because of the fact we've been given all of this great time this morning, and I certainly appreciate the board's indulgence for us to give this little mini seminar on our ESSA plan, I think what we'll do is begin our presentation in December with this next session because it will flow nicely into where we want to go with assessment. So I'm sure Dr. Judkins won't mind holding her small piece of the uh presentation till we get to the assessment uh part of our agenda in December, which will be a very ma, major topic for us to do. So I would like to open it up, if it's okay with President Crawford, for questions um on any of the aspects of today's presentation on ESSA.
Yes, it's perfectly fine. Uh, questions, comments, Dr. Wilcox, and Dr. Lee, and um Ms. Morrow, and Dr. Green, and we'll pick up everyone else afterwards. Please.
Thank you for that uh really comprehensive presentation. Um, and looking at the data, when I first went into the website, I was surprised by all the not met, but now I, I feel like I have a better understanding of it. And I was just curious if there's a way to reward schools for a low equity gap, for high performance and a low equity gap? Um, because it seems like a really important thing to do and to give stu, to, to give schools credit for. Um, so is that something that's on your radar?
Dr. Shaw, that's a good question for you.
Oh, sorry, you were, you were muted.
I was muted, I'm sorry.
Um, so right now, we are only, we only have it as a, as, as a reported element. Um, we had considered um including it more as a part of a school's final score, um, but ultimately, based on um board discussion and requirements of the Protect Our Schools Act, our understanding was that our, the, the school's final score was based on um the, just solely the sum total of their points. Um, and so it's, for example, we couldn't, in the school's final score, bump them up a level um if they had a low equity gap, um, something like that, because the equity gap is not part of, um, it's, it's not its own measure.
But I will say, Dr. Wilcox, um, I wanted to do that exact thing. Um, and I proposed that to the team because I thought it was uh so very, very important because of equity. But as Dr. Shaw points out, we were not able to do that because of the legislation.
Are there a way to like reward those schools in another way? Like to give them some kind of rating on their website or some kind of acknowledgement so that they're rewarded for their achievement on that front?
Well, that's a good point. Uh, I don't think we thought that much outside of the box, but I think it's certainly something for our consideration going forward, and especially as we look at making any uh needed revisions to this system, um, certainly following the existing federal and state laws. But you make a good point for other ways to maybe make that distinction, so it's a good idea.
Thank you. Dr. Lee?
Thank you so much. As one of the oldest uh uh board members to be associated with this.
Good experience, Dr. Lee. Good experience.
I do remember, I mean, we stood on the shoulders of giants at the time. There were some board members that were very um knowledgeable about uh educational policy um and these types of uh accountability systems. So it really felt like being, jumping into the deep end when I started, and the first thing was to look at this and decide if this makes sense. Um, what I did want to just ask about is I noticed that there's no reference to gifted and talented population. I thought it would have been on the dropdown menu, even if it says coming or forthcoming. Um, I think it's really important to measure the progress of the advanced learners because if you don't measure it, no one's really paying attention. And um the whole idea about ESSA is to make sure every student progresses from where they start. And my worry is that the advanced learners are forgotten, and people just act like, well, they're advanced, but they don't need help, but they should be advancing. I've also been noticing there's a lot more research being done on incentivizing early graduation and trying to help advanced learners not have to stay lockstep and do a whole four years, but there's a lot of rigidity sometimes in the way the high school requirements go, and it takes a lot of years of pre-planning to be able to affect early graduation. But especially during these challenging times, it might be a good idea to consider whether we should be thinking about more incentives to help students graduate early if they're capable of doing it. It would conserve resources or spread existing, existing resources over people that really need it, and the advanced learners don't have to stay kind of held back in some ways because they have to finish all these requirements when they're probably ready to go on to college or community college. And it might also help encourage greater use of the dual enrollment that is allowed and available, I think, to many of the high schools. Um, so just a thought to, to think about um a little bit different approaches to address the situation, the challenges. But I also would really emphasize that it was a really big deal that we were one of the few states, I don't know if we were the only state, to actually want to quantify how the advanced learners were doing. And I'm really disappointed that after so many years, it's still not, is it not feasible? I know there was a big uh challenge to define it because we discovered in making this request that the local jurisdictions all define it differently. Um, and so there was an effort to standardize or harmonize some of those definitions. So I'd really like to push to see that that happens. If you could please respond to that.
And I think that is something, um, again, that we want to definitely get into more discussion about in December after we talk about what other measures we need to be including going forward uh and in this, in this uh environment. And uh I will let Dr. Shaw come back, if she has, or, or Chandra, come back and see if they can speak to the actual uh, uh issue of the, the gifted and talented and how that was going to be included, because I think it is on our timeline. So uh Dara or Chandra, could you uh respond to Dr. Lee's question, please?
Uh, yes, I can take it. Um, I may need some assistance just to make sure I have the dates correct, but uh nineteen, twenty? So, okay, so just going back even further, when we rolled out the, the ESSA Accountability Plan, it was expl- Plan, it was explicit in our state plan that we were going to include gifted and talented. And there was a lot of effort made in regards to stakeholder groups to define it, and it was put into COMAR in regards to definition. 1920 was going to be the first year that it was going to be included in our accountability system, and we are set up on the back end to start reporting that. Unfortunately, the pandemic hit. That does not mean we're not going to be rolling out some of those aggregates that we have available to report on. So I'm happy to come back over the next couple of months as we present data and point out exactly where we're able to include information on gifted and talented. There's been a tremendous amount of work on the back end to implement those requirements.
Okay, I really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks. Miss Morrow, next.
Thank you. I have, I think it's just a quick question, hopefully. On Slide 60, when you're talking about the student diagnostics for this year, which grade levels and subjects did we say we're requiring student diagnostics for?
I think this is the first-term metrics, Dara.
Yeah.
Yes.
So the answer is, in the recovery plan, it just spoke to ensuring that we, I don't know the exact language in front of me, but ensuring that diagnostics were conducted. And then we are asking the school systems for results by grade level and by subject, and asking them to indicate whether they did or did not give diagnostics in each of those areas.
Okay, so we didn't have a standardized requirement for which grades and subjects they were asking for?
I don't believe so, but I'm hoping that Mary can jump in.
Yes, thank you. In our recovery plan, we were looking, and I will double-check, and I was just going to while you were speaking, specifically if we mentioned content, we were asking teachers to assess how students were and where students were. And I think as school systems, a number of them have a standard for a standard assessment that they may use internally for English Language Arts, or reading, or mathematics. And to Dr. Salmon's point, when we were discussing this, every teacher, whatever content, assesses their students as to where they are. I think across the board and across all the content areas, though, as to whether they're, and this is in Dara's technical assistance, as she works with the Assistant Superintendents, as to what information they do have. And I will check specifically what our recovery plan, if we do identify the content area.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe, next, thank you. Dr. Green, I believe you were next.
Okay, thank you. First of all, Dr. Shaw, this was wonderful. I like that data. I guess it comes to my days of being principal, when you had to say, okay, what's the data show? What do we have to do? I want to ask if we could do this. I don't know the slide number, but it was the equity report, the equity comparison in student group performance slide, and the example that you did for Federal Hill Prep You did the equity comparison between Black or African-American students and non-Black, and they came up with a score. You know, which one I'm referring to? Okay. This, I guess, almost partners with a comment that Dr. Wilcox said about equity. With our task force on academic equity and excellence for Black boys, is it possible, and Dr. Shaw, I know you can do anything, but is it possible, on that comparison, to also be able to do, you know, I know your dropdown menu says Black, African-American, to also do a gender comparison? So, because, again, one of the things that our task force is realizing over and over again is that many schools, you know, it's kind of in the back of their mind, but it's not really so obvious, this academic or achievement gap between the genders, between boys and girls. So can we do that? And then, like Dr. Wilcox said, incentivize a school or a system that is able to address those gaps between their boys and their girls.
So I can only answer the first part of your question, which is the data part of the question, where is it possible to give those breakdowns further in the equity? And for that, we're going to have to take a closer look at the way that our accountability data is calculated. We have to make sure that we have what, so we obviously have information by race, ethnicity, by students with disabilities, by service group. Need to make sure that we have what we call the cross tabs, so gender crossed with those groups for all of the accountability measures. So we'll take a look at, to see what is and isn't possible in terms of providing data to that end. Certainly, there's a difference between running calculations and then publishing it on our website, because that's a whole different timeline, but we'll take a look to see what our available data are.
I'm not really talking about necessarily cross comparisons, just a straight-up.
Just a straight gender, okay.
Straight gender.
Yeah, we'll look into that to see the way, make sure that we have that information available to the fine level of detail. I'm not sure. And so I don't want to say that we can do that, given the fine level of detail that's required to make up this big calculation.
But we'll look into it, though.
Okay, please, because, again, we're trying to address inequities. And one of the most glaring inequities that we have seen, month after month, year after year, is the inequity between the ways our boys are disciplined and our girls are disciplined, our discipline data for boys, discipline data for girls, academic data for boys, academic data for girls. Huge inequities. So this is an excellent, excellent, excellent way to say, look, folks, this is happening in Maryland, and then also holding schools accountable for addressing those inequities, and, as Dr. Wilcox said, also rewarding those schools and systems that are successful, who have gone out of their way to address those inequities. And hopefully, hopefully, what will happen is they address those inequities, it has a cascading effect on some of the other inequities in regards to discipline, in regards to academics. Thank you. When will we be able to report back on that, Dr. Shaw?
Well, probably by the next board meeting.
Excellent, thank you, Dr. Salmon.
Now, I just made a promise I don't know if we can keep, so I'll say that that is what my hope is. I don't want my team here to have a, you know, a big reaction or anything, but we'll do our best to figure that out.
Dr. Salmon, a colleague of mine once said, nothing is impossible if he didn't have to do it, so.
That's a good point, President Crawford. Great point.
So maybe, if not by next, perhaps by December, when we get all that other cool data. That'd be great, too.
Well, that is our next meeting. That is our next meeting, Dr. Green. December, remember, we meet early in December because of all the holiday things.
Right, that's right. I'm glad you told me. I would have showed up, and I'd be sitting here waiting for the meeting to start in November. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions or comments from board members? We cannot hear you if you're speaking, Mr. Bartley. Still, it doesn't look like you're muted, but we still are unable to hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, yes.
You hear me now? All right. I apologize. I'm having computer connection issues, but I really liked the report card. I don't want to use too many superlatives, because I can get overexcited, but I have some questions about the report card, and in particular, the example school you used. Was that Federal Hill Prep Academy charter? Was it a charter school, or is it just a normal public school?
No, it's a traditional public school. Don't let the name fool you into thinking it's anything other than a traditional public school.
Okay, because it sounded like a charter school. And the second, are charter schools on the same report card as the public schools?
Yes, yes, they are.
Yes, great. So the report card is designed for accountability and assessment, correct?
Yes, and more. The report card was designed to give accountability results, but also to be a data portal to all kinds of data and reporting information about the schools and school systems.
So are there schools that failed to meet a standard? And if they fail to meet the standard, are there consequences? And if schools exceed the standard or get a high score on the report card, are they rewarded? Because in my view of accountability, there has to be some action with regards to, you know, a low score and consequences if there's a high score. Because we know with charter schools, if there's low score, they reap detrimental effects. I was wondering if that happens with any of our public schools with low report card score? I'm having connection issues. I don't know what's going on. Sorry.
Dr. Shaw, can you address that? Sure. So I think I heard two questions, which is, the first is, are there any required rewards or sanctions built into the accountability system? And the second is, are we seeing any outside effects of the accountability system? So might say, like, if a school gets a low score, does their enrollment go down, for example, or things like that? To answer the second part of your question, which is the research part of your question, we haven't had accountability data for enough years to be able to look at that. It is something that, I'm sitting in my office, and I can see my big research agenda board sitting right in front of me. It is something that is absolutely on our research agenda, because the theory of action around accountability is that if we hold schools accountable, then they get better, or they should get better, and they should get better in some specific ways. So if we hold them accountable for chronic absenteeism, does chronic absenteeism improve? And so unfortunately, we don't have enough data to be able to tell that yet, but it is absolutely something that we will look at once we do have more data. The system just hasn't been in place long enough for us to be able to tell with any kind of definitiveness. To the first question about reward, sanction, supports that are tied into the accountability system, I'm actually going to turn that one over to Mary, who is our policy expert when it comes to our ESSA plan.
Thank you. Just quickly, I do want to go back to what I spoke about early, was the identification of the lowest 5% of schools, and then the additional targeted support, which are those schools that have a student group that are performing as low. There are exit criteria for those schools. There are additional requirements, should there not be improvement. In the targeted support improvement schools, if a school does not improve the performance of the student group that put them there, they ultimately go into the category of the CSI, of the those lowest-performing 5% schools. So.
Make sure your lines are muted.
I can hear you, Mary.
The mic.
Maybe you might have to go out and come back in. Mary, we're not hearing you. Mary, we're not hearing you.
Okay. Okay.
Unfortunately, we couldn't hear Mary, so she'll have to either try to come in and come, go in, out, and come back in quickly, to see if she can. I think she was talking about the comprehensive and the targeted schools and the assistance that we were providing them to answer Mr. Bartley's question. Mary, you want to try again?
Yeah, still that static.
Good afternoon, everyone. This is Charlene. Mary is the cause of that static.
Okay.
So she'll, I can smell her from the room, and she can get back in. If that works.
Take her out.
Yeah. Well, not exactly like that.
Not. I think she's. I did not mean that. I think she's heading to Dara's office. Yeah, she's going to head to Dara's office to be able to talk. So she'll be there in a second.
Yes, Mary is on her way into my room.
They're very flexible.
Okay, excellent.
Thank you for the public to hang on here for just one more minute.
Okay.
And Mr. Bartley for your answer. Here she is.
Hi. I'm sorry, I don't know what you heard and what you didn't hear. Is there a hint? Did you hear nothing?
Start from the beginning.
Start from the beginning, Mary. If you didn't hear anything.
We didn't hear anything.
Thanks. So, and a friend from my office, and Dara got here faster than I did. Anyway, so I want to go back to what I first said, and the purpose of ESSA is to identify and differentiate schools. That's important. The second thing was that it is to identify the lowest-performing schools, and they were the CSI and the TSI schools. There are consequences if a school does not exit from that group. In addition, for the targeted support and improvement schools, if they don't exit from the reason or the student group that identified them to be part of that group, if they don't exit, they become a CSI school. So they become among the lowest-performing schools group, which has ultimately more requirements. And then the last thing that I wanted to say is that exactly what you're doing is what parents are doing, what PTAs are doing, what we have heard and been involved in dialogue is you're asking questions. So when you ask, are there consequences? What Dara explained and Chandra explained is there are arrows as to whether the school is improving, or the school is staying the same, or the school is not improving. And it's those questions that are going to work to identify what the local school system's going to do and the state's going to do to provide additional technical assistance to that school. I think that's what I said. But, so there are identified, I guess, there are identified rewards and consequences, and then there are those that come about as a result of the performance, that increase the dialogue and say, what are you doing about this? Is basically the question. Sorry about my sound system.
It's quite all right. Additional comments or questions? Dr. Wilcox?
This is just a comment, but I went into my two kids' my children's schools, and I was kind of alarmed by the, at first by seeing the rating. And then I went and I looked at Walt Whitman, which is, I think, one of the best schools in Montgomery County, or maybe in the state. And they're And their rating is only 82. And so I guess kind of their, what I was expecting to see, they're kind of deflated a little bit. And it must be a really, you're holding them to a high standard to get up to, you know, an A grade, you know, 90% or above. So I'm just telling you my thoughts, but I was surprised to see like what I think of as a D for my daughter's school and a C for my son's school. So it's just alarming when you get in and you look at the data from a parent's perspective.
Well, Dr. Wilcox, that's exactly the reason why we have this report card is to be transparent for all of our parents and community members to be able to see how their schools are doing. And one of the things I think we did a really good job of was to put out a communication document that would assist parents and also principals and working with their parents to be able to interpret this. So it is, you make a good point. And that's really why we made it as accessible as we did and as transparent as we did. So parents could get involved in these conversations.
I don't own any fucking money.
Right.
Never send a, never send a subscription page.
Charlene, can you mute Mr. Bartley? Thank you. Senator Bates.
Thank you. I really, really appreciate it. I know this is a tremendous amount of work, but I think it's going to be very important for parents as well as other policymakers to be able to see. I mean, you obviously can't fix what you don't measure. And I think it's really important that we're looking at this data. And so people can make comparisons. I really, I know it's intensive and I appreciate all the work you've done to put this together and to make it so user friendly. I think that's really good to do. I picked up a couple of the schools in my area to see how they compared. And I think it's going to be very helpful in improving the quality for all of our students. Again, thank you very much.
The thanks goes to the team, Senator Bates. They have worked so hard to get this system where it is. Mary and Chandra and Dara and Jennifer and Dr. Lawson, Dr. Williamson, I mean, it has really been a team effort. And I'm just so glad we had an opportunity to showcase it for you today. And I'd also like to compliment our former Board of, State Board of Education members as Dr. Lee, compliment her as well. She was instrumental in developing this along with the other former board members. So we can't forget to thank them for their hard work as well. So thank you.
Excellent. Seeing no additional questions, I think we'll move, progress with our agenda. The next area is the reports to the State Board for discussion and action. Dr. Salmon, I believe the first.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, plant, you couldn't see my hand. I just have one quick question, which is.
Yes.
Dr. Salmon, you said that you were going to come back to the board in December with some recommendations about some potential modifications. And I think you're probably already doing this, but if you aren't, I'd just like to encourage that. I know you're having weekly conversations with the superintendent and we'd also like to hear that they've been a part of thinking about this process and how things may change.
Actually, I've already started those conversations. And I think you heard a little bit of the feedback this morning with Dr. Salins about the high stakes tests and the alignment to coursework regarding the use of those assessments. So you can see that we've already begun to have those discussions. Thank you.
Okay, well, at this point, we'll move on to our next area.
President Crawford, we have two, one waiver and one regulation coming up. But we're going to start with the waiver request. And I'm going to ask Mary to bring that forward.
Okay, so you have seen and heard earlier today that we have requested a waiver for seniors, seniors who were taking the assessment this school year. Today, we are asking for a waiver for juniors. At this time, juniors in the school year 2020, 2021 will also be taking this assessment for the first time. Results, as Dr. Judkins has explained to you, because of the assessment needing to go through standard setting, the results for the juniors would not be back potentially until November or December of 2021, the next school year. For those of you who, like I did for many years, work with high schools and or have high school students, you know that you prepare for courses for the following year in the previous year. You also prepare during the summer. It would not be possible or fair to these students to determine upon November or December for them to get their results at that point in time and then to make decisions and to get into courses for one, a bridge plan, or two, to get scheduled to take the assessment a second time to see if they passed, which then puts them within months or perhaps even weeks to graduation. And therefore, we are presenting before you a request for this year's juniors, 2020, 2021 students who need to be assessed on English 10 or Algebra 1, that sitting for the assessment would meet their graduation requirement and they would not be required a passing score on the assessment. These students must still pass English 10 and they must pass the English 10, the course and earn credit. They must pass Algebra 1, the course and earn credit. And they must sit for the assessment. But we are requesting a waiver that they would not have to pass the assessment given the standard setting that we need to be doing, that we, that we as a department need to do and the availability of the results of that. So at this point, we're happy to answer questions. We request your approval for a waiver for juniors. And just one other thing, we did discuss, for those of you, excuse me, who were on the board last year, we did discuss this same thing, only it was with a different class of juniors.
Okay, we have questions from Ms. Morrow, Ms. McCusker and Dr. Lee. Ms. Morrow.
Thank you. So I'm a little confused on this, I guess, because I pulled up what we passed in May. And the language in May said, request a waiver for all students who passed Algebra 1, English 10, American Government, High School Assessed Science in 1920 school year from participating in and passing assessments in English 1 or Algebra 1, English 10 and Government and for participating in the Maryland Air Grade Science Assessment. So didn't we already, like if they were taking English 10 last year, didn't we already pass this waiver for them to not need to take English 10 assessment?
So that's a really good question. But we have to take each year at a time. Last year, the assessments were not being given because of the pandemic. Maryland, along with every other state, did not administer the assessment. These were students who were in the English 10 and Algebra 1 course last year. So you're absolutely right. We did ask for a waiver. We did, the State Board did approve that waiver and those students were taken care of. We're now in a different school year. We're talking about juniors who this year are in Algebra 1 and English 10. Not last year, but this year. The assessment will be given. We hope that things get back to normal and that students are back in school and that we are assessing students this spring. So it's a different circumstance. The assessment will be given and it's this year's juniors who are in the course this year. Last year.
So then we're only talking about a small portion of the class of 2022. We're not talking about the whole class of 2022 also has to retake English 10 assessment.
They don't need to retake. No, they already have them. Right.
Okay, so we're, but we're only talking about the kids who are currently enrolled in those courses this year. We're not talking about going backwards for kids who took it last year.
Kids probably, with all due respect, they probably didn't take it last year. So I know what you mean. Yes, yes.
Okay, so kids, kids who passed it last year when they were sophomores.
They're good.
Are good. And we're just talking about kids who are currently taking Algebra 1 and English 10 as juniors.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I'm next.
Ms. McCusker and then Dr. Lee. Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you. One of my questions was already answered by Ms. Morrow, so that covered one. The other one, if they're in the course and they have to pass the course and the assessment score doesn't count towards graduation, why are we sitting them for the, what is, what is the reason we're having them sit for the assessment? I just wanted to know the reasoning.
That's a really excellent question. So I wear an accountability hat and I wear a graduation hat. So let me just go to the accountability for a section, for a second, go back to what I said earlier for the ESSA presentation. We must assess all students annually, grades three through eight and once in high school. If these students are just taking those courses right now, they haven't been assessed. So one, they need to be assessed for accountability. Two, let's be where my graduation requirement hat to talk about. So these are students that there is the opportunity to take the assessment. They really have to take it for accountability. But for graduation, there's no reason why they cannot take it. They're taking the course. They have to pass the course. The thing that we're waiving for them is a particular score because in order to address the, if they pass, if they took the course, took the assessment, passed the assessment, which they find out in November, December, they're fine. But if they didn't, it's because we have to do the standard setting that would, is not what we see is fair to them to be in the final months of their potential graduation. So it gives you the ability to stay within because students are required right now in sophomore to do that, to take and pass. So you're just removing the pass requirement. But that's a good clarification. Thank you.
So from an accountability hat, ESSA is requiring us to have them sit for the exam at this point unless at some point the feds decide to waive ESSA. But for right now, ESSA, that ESSA requirement's there. And so these kids have to sit for it federally.
For that, yes, for that requirement.
Okay, thank you.
Pulling the one away.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Certainly.
Okay, Dr. Lee, then Ms. Hallie.
Thank you. So my question's kind of on the compliments, Ms. McCusker's question. Why does it take so long to get the results of the assessment? If it's being done in the spring, I'm assuming it's, it's a digital kind of, I mean, it's a test that you can, in mass, you know, score it. I feel like with this situation, we should more quickly get the results and be able to help the students pass this test and have the summer months and the beginning of fall. And I don't like how we reduce the standards. But I don't understand why it takes so many months to get the results when so many other things can be happening much more quickly. And I feel like we owe it to our students to be able to give them a result quickly because then they know it's closer to the event, right? It's closer to when they actually learned the material to see how they did. And if there's some way to expedite that process, if you're talking about actually being of help to the students, that makes a lot more sense to me than waiting until November, December to get the results and then saying, well, we can't do anything. It's too late.
Dr. Lee, that's really an excellent question. And in normal, in any other year, you're absolutely right. And that's why we never come to you for a waiver in any other year. It is because we, and I think Dr. Judkins spoke about this, it is because we have the assessment that we cannot score yet. We have to do the standard setting. So normally, we don't have to do standard setting. We have a score. We know what the standard is. The score is applied and you're absolutely right, within weeks, we can get the score. But it's the standard setting. It's a one-year blip, I will say. It's a one-year necessity to do this because we have to take all the data and the assessment folks are going to want to get the results of as many students as they can. But then they have to look at the standard setting, peer review process, in order to set those scores for a one, a two, a three, a four, passing, whatever the scores are. So it's the, it's the work we have to do on, the standards are the same that we are assessing. But as you're aware, this is the first year of the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program for English Language Arts and Algebra. It's just a one-year thing. And normally, we would turn it around. You're absolutely right. And we should begin the work with helping the student. And that's the way it is in any other year. It's just because of this one.
Yeah, and it's a little concerning too that your standard setting in a year that's probably anomalous.
Well, we have to do that because we have to have those standards. So thank you.
Dr. Gable, my question follows nicely from Dr. Lee's question, which is going to be deja vu. So as you mentioned, for students who pass it, no problem. For students who don't pass it, we don't want it to be high stakes. But if you don't pass it and you don't have adequate planning time to give those students remediation, what's the plan for students who find themselves in that position?
I, that's also a good question. And that was discussed by the board and I'm sure you were part of that discussion last year is what can we do? These students, so let's, let's take English 10 or whatever English they're in. They're taking the next year's English. We require four credits in English, as you know. So if the student came back and did not meet this, did not meet the standard when you get the results, that is going to be a key to the teacher who's going to get those results. What can I do to help the student? And the second is math is also required every year, which is my background, Dara's background. We're all math books. They must take math every year. So it's the same cue to, it doesn't mean, oh, that was an assessment. Let's forget that. You're teaching these students right now and can look at where there was, where they were stronger, where they had some weakness. And by all means, whatever can be done to assist those students should be done.
Is there any way for us to get data from these periods where we're not going to make it high stakes, just so that we have a sense of how the population?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I know. How they respond. That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
If possible, at the, Mr. Bartley and then we'll open it up for a motion. Mr. Bartley, please.
So I have a question. So are you asking for this waiver because the students are subjected to learning online? And if you're asking for this waiver, so it's nothing to do with the learning online? It's just because we're in the pandemic?
I'm sorry.
Can you go back and respond? Because it's not, it's neither of those two things.
Okay.
No, it's not. Thank you. And I understand the confusion. It is, as Dr. Salmon said, it's neither. It goes back to because it is the first year of the administration of the assessment and we don't have the standard set. We have to do that standard setting. In order to do the standard setting, it does, it does take some time. So it has nothing to do with virtual learning. It has nothing to do. Last year, it did have to do with the pandemic because we didn't administer the assessment. And so it doesn't get administered and it's not the students' fault. And so it doesn't get administered and it's not the students' fault. So we came to you with a waiver. This year, we will administer it. We it will just because of this one year take some extra months to set the standard. It's a one-year thing. Thank you. Thank you for the questions. They're really good.
Thank you. Excellent questions. Ms. Morrow, then we'll open it up for a motion. Yes, please.
So just real quickly, and this may be something that you're already looking at for December. Are we already talking about how how we're going to be proactive in potentially administering these tests when some students are still virtual in the spring? Because I know like a lot of the districts are still offering that as a possibility for families. So is that hopefully somewhere already in the conversations?
Yes, we're already talking about some of those things. And again, we'll be really getting into the weeds, so to speak, with that in December.
Okay.
And then with with that, Mr. Crawford, I'll offer a motion that we approve the waiver as presented.
Have a motion from Ms. Morrow. Second by Mr. Wu. Any further discussion? Seeing no further discussion, we will take a voice vote, voice and hand vote. We ask all of our board members to to activate their cameras, video. All those in favor of the motion for the waiver for the juniors for the 2021 school year, please say aye and raise your hand so that you can be seen and counted.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Those who opposed indicate nay abstentions.
The motion carried, unanimous?
Very good. Thank you very much. Great discussion, great questions. Dr. Salmon, I think we have another one?
Yeah, we have two kind of related
Okay.
uh, regulations. And I'm going to ask Tiara Booker-Dwyer to bring forth to the board. These are related to our career and technology education programs across the state. So Tiara, welcome.
Hello, I'm glad to be here. So good afternoon, members of the State Board of Education. At the September 22nd board meeting, I presented information regarding the revised vision and direction for career education. For over a year, the Division of Career and College Readiness collaborated with stakeholders representing school systems, institutions of higher education, industry, professional organizations, student organizations, and others to reshape when, where, how, and to whom career education is delivered. The revised direction is grounded in ensuring that all students have access to high-quality career education from grades 3K through 12. It is being requested that the board grant permission to publish amendments to Code of Maryland Regulation 13A 0410, Program of Instruction and Career Development for College and Career Readiness, and Code of Maryland Regulation 13A 0402, Secondary School Career and Technology Education. Content to remove is written in red and is written in red font and placed in brackets. And content that will be included is written in italics and highlighted in yellow. Revisions to the COMAR for Program of Instruction and Career Development in College and Career Readiness include removal of language that refers to outdated documents, addition of language requiring all school systems to ensure equal access and support in the implementation of career development programs, requiring all students to update their academic and career plans annually and to draw connections between academic achievement and career goals, and requiring school systems to submit a description of their career development instructional program as part of the certification process. Revisions to the COMAR for Secondary School Career and Technology Education include modifying the definition of CTE to align with the federal definition of CTE, requiring CTE programs to align to high-scale, high-wage, or in-demand careers, provide the opportunity for students to earn industry credentials for post-secondary credits, include state-approved career and technical student organizations as co-curricular learning experiences for CTE students, and provide the opportunity for students to engage in workplace learning experiences. The amendments also require the completion of a needs assessment to evaluate access, equity, and student performance, and expands the use of federal Perkins Funds for the development, coordination, implementation, or improvement of CTE as it relates to labor market, workforce, and economic development needs and outcomes from the CTE needs assessment. These amendments strengthen career education in Maryland and creates an aligned and holistic approach to ensure that all students are prepared for career success. It is being requested that the board grant permission to publish amendments to the two regulations discussed. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Board members, the floor is open for questions. Uh, Dr. Green?
Just a clarification, Dr. Booker-Dwyer. The red is removed, correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
All righty. Seeing no further questions, the floor is now open for a motion concerning the two COMAR sections. Senator Bates?
I'd like to move approval of both.
I'll second that.
We have to do them one at a time.
I think we can do them both together. People. Fine, so we have a motion from Senator Bates to approve both permissions to publish. Have a second from Mr. DeShields. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Haley, yes, ma'am.
Uh, Dr. Booker-Dwyer, one of the things that you mentioned was having equal access for students and monitoring that. Is that an annual report that you'll be preparing for the board?
Well, it is an annual report that we that we collect. We also have public-facing dashboards that where you could see for every school system, the students disaggregated by gender, race, socioeconomic status, and and other Perkins Five indicators that we are required to report on. We report this data every year to the U.S. Department of Education, and it is made public. So so it is data that is available at any time.
And then it's also part of the report card as one of those. I think it was a 5% opportunity to have a student participate in one of these product programs, which included CTE, right? It allows me to monitor.
Ready to get.
Right, okay, okay. Thank you very much.
Seeing no further question, we will vote as we have done. I ask you to activate your cameras. Those in favor, please say aye and raise your hand so that you can be counted. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those that oppose, please indicate. Raise your hand. Any abstentions? Mr. Shaw?
Motion carried, President Crawford is unanimous.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, so we're now at the point now where it's the State Board Member Committee reports and updates. Uh, the floor is now open. Dr. Green?
Yes, um, just a report on the task force on achieving academic equity and exits for black boys. I'm going to share my screen and hopefully everything works sparkling.
All righty.
All right. This is supposed to everyone?
Yes.
Okay, great. All right, our last meeting was October the 8th, a few weeks ago. We were honored by a gentleman who has been in education, especially education for minority children for decades, Dr. Jawanza Kujufu. Um, Dr. Kujufu graciously, and all of our authors that have come before us have done this pro bono. So we were very thankful. Uh, we concentrated on one of his books, which talked about changing school culture for black males. And again, before I continue, I just want to thank my colleagues on the board for allowing me to do this and for your patience to do this because we want to make sure that the activities of the task force are known to the public and we're being completely transparent as to what we're doing. Um, Dr. Kujufu gave us a whole wealth of what he considered possible solutions to changing the culture as well as some key principles. I won't list them all here, but just to give you a taste of what he talked about, he talked about single-gendered schools and classes. And these are all strategies and programs that he has seen success in the hundreds of schools which which he has worked. Rights of passage programs, fourth-grade intervention teams, uh, Greater Right Brain lesson plans and left brain, uh, left-brain pedagogy. This ties into what Dr. Leonard Sacks talked to us about in September, about teaching boys differently than girls. Uh, more movement in daily physical education and Afrocentric and Culture classes. That is really key because unfortunately, many of our young men um, don't realize their cultural heritage. And we want them to have high self-esteem, but we want them to have high self-esteem because and to feel good about themselves because of who they are and from where they came. Um, and also, he talked about evening, Saturday, and summer academies to address students who need more help and support, activities such as debate teams, chess, investing in entrepreneurship, all of those, helping our students, making education really relevant. I also want to thank the board for allowing me to attend a conference, a video conference, uh, in California, Oakland. Unified school districts started a program called the King Makers Program. And I want to thank Dr. Andrea Kane from Queen Anne's County, superintendent there for letting me know and including me in on that presentation. It was wonderful, wonderful. And have a lot of good information that came back from them. It is essentially a mentorship program, but it's more than a mentorship program for African-American males. It is also curriculum. It's a whole program that I really want our task force to look at. Um, just to remind the board, we have three study groups, all working on recommendations on social, emotional, and behavioral support, recruiting and training skilled, competent teachers, and curriculum instruction. And each one of those groups will be coming up with a set of recommendations. And we are asking that for each recommendation that they come up with, that they formulate or they complete what I call a recommendation implementation plan. What we have found in previous task force, they come up with, oh, wonderful recommendations, but they miss one specific component that's so important. And that's this one. What are the ways that the recommendation could be carried out? It's wonderful to come up with all these wonderful ideas, but we need to know how can we do it? So our task force will not just be coming up with recommendations. We really want to come up with a how-to guide. So as always, we invite input from other educators, organizations, especially specializing in educating boys of color, schools, both public and non-public, which have experienced success in educating boys of color, and also local educators, teachers, and organizations, authors, and professional developers. Even though we can't have everyone on the task force, we didn't want a huge, huge. We have 22 members already, including our superintendent, Dr. Salmon. But we also want to hear input. I don't, I would hate to think that educators who have some input and useful information just kind of sit back, hold their arms, and say, well, I'm not on the task force and don't share the information that they have. So hopefully that will happen. I know that I have been approached by several educators who wanted to be on the task force. We were full at the time, but I I haven't heard from them since. So hopefully, they're not saying, well, since I'm not on the task force, you know, I'm I can't share. But hopefully, they do. We invite superintendents and principals. In fact, we're still recruiting schools to say, all right, next school year, when everything's just going to be smooth and silk, we're going to open on time. We want to put into place some of these recommendations that the task force is coming up with. Um, I believe President Crawford, you called it uh, proof-of-concept schools or pilot schools, to pilot some of these recommendations that we can say, we've gathered data, this is the benefit that we've been given. And also, interested principals are invited as well. You know, if they feel that they would like to be a part of that and talk to their superintendent, I would love to have them to come and sit in on future task force. And also, superintendents, if you would like one or more of your principals to consider this, please contact Dr. Salmon. And you know, let her know and she will pass that information on to me and we can take it from there. Because we want them to be included now so they can be helping to formulate some of the how-to part of the ways that the recommendations. Board members, board members, I want to thank, first of all, Dr. Melly McCarthy. I'm sorry.
Dr. Green, excuse me, just a second. If we could just mute our phone, our lines, please. Thank you.
Okay. Um, I want to thank Dr. Melly McCarthy, Senator Bates, for being part of this process. And Dr. Getty has been coming regularly to our task force meetings. And I thank you, Dr. Getty. But we've got room for others. So if you would like to come, just let me know. We'll send you a link so you can sit in on the discussion. Even if you can't stay the entire three hours, at least come and introduce yourself and just let the task force members know that what they're doing is so important. And also, our meetings are recorded. They're on this State Department of Education website. You can also listen in. And if you don't get a chance to listen to anyone else's presentation, please listen to the October 8th presentation by Dr. Kujufu. Oh, it was wonderful, wonderful. If if I wasn't trying to be professional, I would have cried and hooped and hollered and laughed and cheered. But what he was saying was so good. And going forward, we want to continue to hear about best practices, successful strategies from public charter and independent schools, you know? We're not saying no. We just want to hear from public educators. Charter schools, independent schools, parochial schools, they are experiencing success. And we would like to hear from them. And also suggestions from our community stakeholders. Thank you very much for your patience. Any questions? And I will stop sharing.
Thank you, Dr. Green. Ms. Haley. And then Dr. Getty.
I will just give you a brief update from the Digital Learning Committee. We spent some time reviewing some questions for a request for information we plan to give to the vendor community so that we can learn more about best practices in digital learning and what's available to our students. That will help the department to look at ways that we can support our local school systems with either tools or guidelines and also to think about recommendations about what we might want to centralize and what we might want to have as a distributed leadership. We also were inspired when Dr. Hall from NASBI made a presentation to the board about some things that are happening in other states. And so we have started discussions to create a master plan for digital learning for Maryland. Some of you may remember that the Digital Learning Committee was established in July of 2018, met 10 times and came back and gave a report to the board in September of 2019. Part of the work of that that came out of that recommendation was to set up an advisory committee, which had members from around the state. That advisory committee was reviewing, there were four objectives that the Digital Learning Committee established. And there were short-term, midterm, and long-term plans associated with each of those objectives. That advisory committee was looking at all of those plans to refine them and looked particularly at implementation for the short-term initiatives. We have engaged them, especially during this pandemic. They gave us a head start by having a network of people in each of the local school systems to talk about this digital COVID. And they are also looking at our request for information questions. And in our next meeting, which is next Friday, we'll be discussing the next steps for that advisory board as well. as well as potential milestones for developing this master plan.
Any questions?
Dr. Green?
Do you have a question?
I think Dr. Getty raised her hand when I asked for questions. I think Dr. Getty, thank you, Dr. Hall, I'm sorry. But I think Dr. Getty had a question.
No, I just wanted to talk about NASB.
Okay, okay, well, let's first, let's finish up with Ms. Haley. Any questions for the Digital Learning Group? Okay, then Dr. Getty?
I just wanted to thank whoever's responsible for allowing several members to go to the NASB conference. It was highly valuable to me. I attended the new member sessions. And the highlight to me was the National Teacher of the Year. She's a pre-K teacher in Kansas, and she was just absolutely outstanding and inspiring. Her class is in a nursing home, and they have a partnership with the senior citizens. She provoked tears. She was so amazing. The other session that was really great was I attended a session on equity, and I ordered the book from the presenter, Dr. Kendi from Boston University. And I am wading through it. It was quite difficult to get all the concepts, but thanks for the opportunity.
Excellent. Ms. Marl, thank you.
I was just going to follow up to what Dr. Getty said. I attended a lot of those NASB conferences too, and it was quite interesting to listen to. I also was going to add, I volunteered to be part of their Public Education Positions Committee for this next year, and they also said that there are openings on the Government Affairs Committee. If, I don't think we currently have a Maryland representative, so if anybody is interested in that, I guess reach out to Mr. Crawford, and they can coordinate that.
Thank you. Thank you very much for volunteering. Any other comments or questions? I have two things, but I'll, Ms. McCusker?
I just wanted to say that I'm really encouraged by our board's recent attempts to be more transparent and reach out to more stakeholders. I think it's something that's going to make us stronger as we move forward, especially now when there are so many when we're really facing big challenges, that it's going to take the village. And I'm really encouraged that we are trying to get all the voices of the village. And as we look at, look forward to ESSA and the changes we're talking about making to our report card, that we are going to invite input from the superintendents. And certainly, I hope, you know, we'd be going back to those initial stakeholder groups and getting their input on changes that we're looking at making. And I just wanted to commend us as a board for trying to bring about that that really positive input from our key stakeholders to help us be more responsive and a stronger board.
Thank you. General Sumter?
I wasn't going to speak to it because I thought we had a good conversation about the ESSA reporting. But the question was about what happens with those reports? What are the positives? And I just wanted to share from a local board, I've been on a local board, believe me, it's not just parents looking at those numbers or other educators. When the local board, when those numbers hit, the local board tapped it there to initiate them. But when that superintendent of the local jurisdiction or the local board goes to our governing body at the local level, they have looked at it also. And they are talking to the local system on what they're going to do to correct any school that is uplifting and hurting. And because we get funding from them, or they get funding from the locals, already engage employers in the county, engage. Also, the, getting back to the jurisdiction, every jurisdiction wants to bring business and bring wealth and livelihood for people in their jurisdiction. And the local business people, the state legislators, the local governing bodies, they look at those numbers. And the local jurisdictions are held accountable for that. And I just wanted to give you from the local perspective, what MSTE is doing with putting those numbers out there in such detail really brings people out to speak to their local education. Thank you.
Thank you. Two things I want to say. One, the search committee, we are, our recommendation for a search firm is with the procurement officials for approval. So we're hopeful in the next week or so, that will be done, and we will then be at a point of being able to move forward, and that will involve interviews of the board. And key stakeholders will be some of the very first things that will happen. So we're hopeful that's going to go quickly. Second thing, I just want to take liberties as president to just share something of a personal nature. I shared it with the board. A few, I guess about a few weeks ago, I was diagnosed with a form of prostate cancer. It's called Leishen Seven. And the reason why I'm sharing it is, is to offer as an encouragement to men. You know, we don't particularly like going to doctors. But this is an encouragement for men, especially men of color, to get the annual exams. This was detected during an annual physical examination with the PSA test. In the early stages, there are no symptoms. My doctors say that by the time you get symptoms, you have very few options. So I just wanted to use this platform just to encourage men. Especially, when I, I remember when I was in my twenties or thirties, I had no idea what a doctor was. I think I'd heard of it, but I'd never experienced it. But as you get older, you want to have the exam, you want to have the annual physicals, the annual exams. You want to catch these situations early while you still have options and while there's still a very good possibility for, you know, a very good treatable outcome. So I wanted to just make that announcement, and again, just encourage men, in particular. If you're not doing, you haven't had your annual exam, go get one. It's the right thing to do. It's sort of the manly thing to do. I'll just say that. Okay, with that, then if there are no other comments, then what I'd like to do is to read the statement for the executive session, and then we will have to vote to go into executive session. Pursuant to Sections 3-305B7 and 305B13 of the General Provisions Article of the Annotated Code of Maryland, the State Board will adjourn to executive session to discuss the following. Four appeals, one draft order, I wish I got it right. One draft opinion, two internal management items, resuming in-person state board meetings and internal meetings. And we would propose to reconvene to report out in two hours, so it'd be about 3:30. The floor is now open for a motion to adjourn to executive session.
So moved, or Dr. Green?
Dr. Green, and then seconded by?
Rachel McCusker seconded.
By Ms. McCusker. Seeing no questions, we'll just do a voice vote. All in favor of adjourning to executive session, please say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Mr. Shaw?
The motion carried unanimously?
Alrighty, so we'll go right into executive session. Thank you very much.